We're going to go ahead and get started. Would everybody take their seats, please? Would everyone take their seats, please? So, we did close session, and I have nothing to report out from closed session. I'd like to do a roll call. Clerk?
Councilmember Weinshoff.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Council -- Vice Mayor Goddard.
Here.
Councilmember Lacks.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here.
Okay, and I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we move number 16 because we anticipate having a number of students and Drake faculty here this evening to right after open time for public expression so we can send them home in good time for them to get ready for the school day tomorrow.
I would make a suggestion that we go through the presentations and the proclamation first, and then we can do item 16.
Can you anticipate how long the presentations would last?
Yes, I've talked to all of the presenters, and we're not talking about that much time.
So you're thinking we could, you know, get the kids on and out by 8:00?
Yes.
Okay, then I would ask that we move the number -- if it's the council's pleasure, we move number 16 to after the presentations and before any break.
Okay.
I would second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a quick question. I had one I wanted to --
You have to speak into the microphone or we're recording.
On the consent calendar, should we talk about that now?
No, we'll talk about that when we get to the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
So, motion Weinshoff, second, Reed. Thank you. Okay, so let me just quickly read through the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the council has a responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at council meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and sensibility. Please turn off all cell phones or place in silent mode. We'll review the agenda at 10:00 to decide what items we continue or move around. So with that, we'll get started. The announcements. We have an English Tea Party held by Park on Sunday at February 8th, 2:00 to 4:00 at the Women's Club. Reservations are accepted through February 5th. Michelle, reservations online or do they call in?
I think they have to call Maria. Yeah, telephone the Town Hall. The number's at the top of the agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. And then we have vacancies, two on the Planning Commission, one on Parks and Rec Committee, one on Open Space Committee. So applications are available at Town Hall and on the Town website, and contact Michelle Gardner, our Town Clerk, for information. The food pantry, Saturdays 9:00 to 1:00 at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, and volunteers are always needed. So that's a great opportunity, let folks know who are in need of food to go to the food bank. So with that, we will start with open time for public expression for items that are not on the agenda. Okay, Norma, if you could state your name and address, if you feel comfortable doing so.
Sure. Norma Fragoso, 74 Myrna Avenue, and I wanted to thank the council for scheduling the senior yoga class that happens here in this room on Mondays from 2:00 to 3:00. We have a great teacher, Tamala's terrific. It's a great yoga class. I went to my first one, and I encourage more people to show up, and thank you very much. That is absolutely free of charge, which is almost ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to say we want to try to have even more programs for seniors, but the yoga sounds great. Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak in open time? See none.
What?
Okay, this may be a first.
It may be a last.
We are going to move on to presentations, and I do have the honor of reading a proclamation in honor of our former council member Larry Bragman, who is here hiding somewhere in the back, and I have informed him. I am reading the entire proclamation. So I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll come out and have you come to the podium, Larry, and hand it to you, as well as a small gift. Whereas Larry Bragman has been a resident of Fairfax for over 35 years, and has been an active and concerned citizen since then, and whereas Larry lives with his wife Holly and stepsons Trevor and Calvin, and whereas Larry served on the Town Council for 11 years, twice as mayor and twice as vice mayor, and whereas Larry is respected by the Town Council, his peers, the citizens of Fairfax, and everyone who has worked with him due to his commitment, dedication, and conscientiousness, and whereas Larry has a keen legal mind and has provided incredible competency to his position with the Town of Fairfax, and -- this is a very long one. Whereas within three months of being elected to the Town Council, Larry wrote the civility resolution for the Fairfax Town Council that is in place today and served as a model of decorum throughout his tenure on the council, and whereas in 2008 Larry drafted the Council Public Issue Agenda Policy Ordinance, allowing the public to put items on the Town Council meeting agendas, and whereas Larry has supported Fairfax's autonomy and independence, co-writing ballot measures and providing campaign leadership for local Fairfax revenue measures F 2005, I 2009, D 2011, and our most recent J 2014, in support of public safety, public works, and youth and senior programs, and whereas Larry is an advocate for open and transparent government, encouraging and supporting the recording, televising, and streaming of public meetings, and directing resources towards the Community Media Center of Marin, and whereas Larry is passionate in his beliefs and has served the Fairfax community by his dedication to the health of the citizens and of the land, often guided by his green progressive politics and his strong sense of justice, and whereas as a lifelong environmental advocate, Larry has dedicated hundreds of hours to the protection of open space in Fairfax and Marin County, and whereas in 2005 Larry drafted the resolution establishing the Fairfax Open Space Committee and provided leadership for the purchase of Sky Ranch for open space, and whereas Larry, an avid cyclist, has always supported alternative transportation and drafted the resolution for Complete Streets, obtained funding for the Fairfax Bikes Fund, and grants for pedestrian and bicycle improvements for Fairfax through the non-motorized transportation pilot project funding, and whereas Larry co-founded the Fairfax EcoFest in 2004 and continues to contribute to its success each year, and whereas Larry has advocated for recycling and reuse, drafting the Fairfax Zero Waste Resolution in 2007, and negotiating a model franchise agreement with Marin Sanitary to include free compost and chipper days for residents, and whereas Larry championed the reduction in use of plastic bags and drafted the 2008 ballot measure for the Fairfax plastic bag ban, and whereas Larry strongly supported bans on the use of pesticides, herbicides, and rodenticides, and whereas in 2010 Larry drafted the ordinance for a moratorium on the installation of smart meters in Fairfax, and whereas in 2011 Larry co-founded the Fairfax Food Bank with his wife Holly and Fairfax community pastor Catherine Harts, and has volunteered there every Saturday since its creation, and whereas in 2010 Larry supported and drafted the Fairfax Ordinance prohibiting smoking, and whereas in 2004 Larry co-wrote the ballot initiative banning GMOs from being cultivated in Marin, and in 2012 wrote resolutions in support of GMO labeling, and whereas Larry drafted resolution opposing cuts to Social Security and to food stamps, opposing Proposition 8 and the National Defense Authorization Act, and whereas in 2012 Larry authored the resolution in support of the reclassification of marijuana as a drug with recognized medical benefits, and whereas Larry devoted 11 years as a Fairfax council member and countless hours to the Town of Fairfax and its citizens, and has made innumerable contributions to the Town of Fairfax, serving the public with integrity and intelligence. Now therefore be it hereby proclaimed, then acknowledgement of his dedication, commitment, exemplary service, and many contributions to the Town and the community, the Town of Fairfax thanks Larry Bragman and wishes him success in his future endeavors, and be it further proclaimed that the Town of Fairfax is a much better place because Larry chose to live here, and that February 4th, 2015 is hereby proclaimed Larry Bragman Day in the Town of Fairfax. It's good to see I'm not the only one who cried. We want to thank Michelle Gardner, who spent a lot of time trying to frame this wonderful proclamation, and here are your nameplates. Thank you, Larry.
I just want to say thank you, and I'm just very glad I found Fairfax and Fairfax found me, and because it's been really fulfilling for me, and being part of the community is just, I don't know, you know, it just kind of completed me, too. So it's a good fit. It was a good fit, and, you know, I stepped into a tradition that was started before me, and I guess I just want to encourage you to continue the tradition, because that's what makes Fairfax great. It's all of us working together, and that's why that resume you read happened. That wasn't just me. That was me helping other people put their ideas into action, and there's no reason why that should stop, and the challenges that we faced in the last 11 years, you're going to face a whole new panoply of challenges, because it never stops, and you just have to, you know, my only advice, you know, is just to remain open to change, and to have the courage to embrace it, and to be, as a member of the council, to be translating it into action, into legislation, into to benefit the public here in Fairfax, and be a model, really, because where I grew up in Wisconsin, you know, that's really what was called the laboratory of democracy, when the LaFollets ran Wisconsin as a progressive party, and that's really what Fairfax is, and that's the tradition that I came into from Frank and others, and it's everybody. It's not, you know, there's too many people to really to thank for me, but we all work together, and that's how we accomplish things. So, you know, we have to learn to put our differences aside and move forward, and that's very, very important, because I think what we found out in 2005 and last year, it's fragile. It's much more fragile than you might think, and so don't ever take that for granted, that you need to work to keep, to bind the community together, and, you know, the community really looks to you as an example of that. So, not to be too Pollyanna about it, everybody's got their differences, but we do need to learn to speak with each other, not against each other, not past each other, and that's, you know, that's how human beings progress, in their ideas and their governance. So, thank you. Thank you, Fairfax. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight.
Yes.
Okay, Larry doesn't know about this part, but I think a lot of the rest of you know about this part. When Michelle asked me to help come up with the list of things, and I waited till the very last day, when she's like, "Yeah, I kind of need it now," I had an idea that maybe it could be something a little more concrete, also given on this night, so I just want to say on January 20th was when this idea was hatched, which wasn't that long ago, and not every single T has been crossed, especially in order to keep it a surprise, from Larry, which I think it is, but on, I've talked to a lot of committees and people that have worked with Larry, and so on behalf of the Open Space Committee, Park and Rec Town, the EcoFest Committee, Fairfax Gardeners Alliance, and other people I'm probably forgetting, there's a little parklet, I'm calling it, near our house at the confluence of Belinas, Cascade, and Fristic, this little triangle that has a bench under this giant beautiful oak tree, and so that is going to be a dedication. I'm thinking Bragman Patch. It's like a little patch of land. I don't know. These things have to be ironed out still, but Dean from Madera Furniture is going to replace this existing bench with one like the ones in Belinas Park, those beautiful new ones, and the Gardeners Alliance, and Shelby Lamott are going to help sort of clean it up, and what else is happening? Probably a plaque or something. I don't know, but anyway, this is the before picture, and then we'll have an after picture at some point. Thanks a lot.
So, we were going to take, have a little celebration. We won't take a lot of time for that, so we can keep moving on the agenda, but we have a celebration in honor of Larry Welcoming Peter, and also our most humble Garrett Toy. This is his two-year anniversary, our town manager. He didn't want to be included in the celebration, but I think he should. So we'll just take five minutes and grab some refreshments, and then get started so we can get our young folks in and out, get through our presentation. So let's just take five minutes, and I'm pretty diligent on those five minutes. And John Reed, come back to the dais, please. Okay, let's have all council members take their seats so we can get started. So, I think we're going to do these presentations quickly, so we can move on to item 16 to get the young folks in and out, and Garrett, maybe you could mention who from the county is here?
Were you going to do 16 before the presentation?
No, after the presentation.
Oh, okay. All right, sure. So item number two?
Yes.
Okay. So in terms of emergency response, I think last meeting we indicated that we'd have Fire, PD, and County EOC present to make kind of a five-minute presentation each on what they did to prepare for the storm in December, what happened during the event, and maybe how people can better prepare for future-type events. So maybe what I'd like to do is first turn it over to Chief Moran to make a brief presentation on PD, then we have Battalion Chief Mahoney from the Fire District to do a quick presentation, and I'm actually not sure if the person from the county is here yet, so we'll have to play that by ear, but it's basically --
Well, if they don't show up, we'll have to just go without them.
Right, right.
Okay, and then you're going to talk about Department of Public Works?
Public Works, really briefly. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't really take more than, oh, maybe that's the person from the county. It'll take less than 20 minutes total.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
If the county's not here, why don't we put the kids first?
She's here.
Oh, okay.
We also have another report, the Vector Control District. Okay, with that, Chief Moran, are you up first?
I think I am. All right, well, as we know, we weathered, we weathered the storm very well. For, so, that's an easy audience. So for, this go-around was a little unique, because we knew that it was going to be a big event, so we took a little more steps than we normally would. I think, as everyone knows, we're always pretty prepared, police and fire, and we're pretty dialed in. We've got a lot of tenured employees, including Public Works, which Garrett will touch on, and everybody kind of knows what they're supposed to do. So for any event, we prepare and get ready, but for this particular event, we took a little additional extra steps, and some of the bullet points are that myself and Chief Mills from the Fire Department, we met and discussed our action plan, and the Fire Department's here to talk about their portion, but we met and discussed how we were going to work together, what we've done in the past. Chief Mills is new to the Ross Valley Fire, so we did that. I met with all the Public Works folks, with Mark Lockaby and Garrett, and we coordinated things that needed to be done in anticipation of the storm. One unique thing we did was we actually, at the firehouse is where we house our EOC if it needs to be activated, and what we did in anticipation of the December storm was actually deploy all the equipment. We brought it all out. We assured it worked, the telephones, fax machines, printers, computers, the network connections, because from the firehouse, we can plug directly in and reach the police network, we can reach Town Hall network. So we ensured that was all in working order, because we really hadn't deployed it all. It's kind of reactive. You'd pull it out when you think you need it, or as something happens, but in this, for this instance, we brought everything out and got that, got that in order, and when we've done that in the past, what we learned is things we need to upgrade, things we should work on and make it better. So each time, because we really haven't activated it, but each time we pull the stuff out, we learn things that we'd like to change, add, and/or upgrade. So we have a small list of that that I don't have with me, that we'll probably throw in the next year's budget, and maybe get a little upgrade on that. One of the important things is we always tell residents to do, and business owners, is to take care, to prepare ahead of time. So what we always do, especially for an event, is we get Town Hall and the Police Department and the firehouse ready for the event, so that we don't have to deal with our own house, and we can be out there helping others. So we worked on clearing our roof, the leaves, getting the sandbags, the storm doors, all in order, tuning up the emergency generator that runs Town Hall and the Police Department, firehouse. You still have your own. Ours doesn't do yours. Yeah, so it makes sure the generator's in order, because if the power goes out, we need to keep everything up and running, so we did all that. If, in the event telephone lines go down, or cellphone towers, we, the Police Department has a satellite phone, which works on satellites, so we don't need landlines, we don't need cell towers, so we ensured that that was in working order. We test that every quarter, but we, in anticipation of this, we got that out and got that, got that ready. Coordinated extra staffing in dispatch, as well as officers on the street. Again, we coordinated with the Fire Department and Public Works. And then just during the event, what was very interesting this time, because I've been around for a lot of them, is I saw more residents actively involved in not only taking care of their own properties, but out in our areas that weren't theirs, cleaning drains, storm drains, and just doing a lot of things. Several residents were driving around in their vehicles, and they would ask us where they could go to help out for different flooding issues or whatever. So that was, that was pretty unique. I'm not embellishing that at all. There was a lot of residents that were really out there helping other people, which was, which was really nice to see. We had no loss of communication, we had no power outages, at least the Police Department. The generator never kicked on. Not sure if any areas in town lost power, but all our communications worked, radio, telephones, we had no, we had no, we didn't deluge the system with people calling, so that, that all worked well. That's kind of the bullet points of mine. Maybe you can speak to your guys' action plan. We, it really worked well. Everything worked well for us this storm.
A quick note is we're expecting another major rain event, either Thursday night late or Friday, and they said it's going to be pretty big, so I'm hoping you guys are already coordinating that, and we did have something like 1,500 residents with power out, but it wasn't out very long. There was some that was out, I think there were about 400 that were out a little bit longer, but we hear that directly from PG&E. So that's another thing to think about, is how do we get to some of those residents that do have power out, or how do they contact us? Okay, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
Dan Mahoney, Ross Valley Fire Department. Chief Moran hit a lot of the points, working in our agency with them, but due to the projected rainfall, we took a very proactive approach to it. In the past, we've taken a little bit of a reactive approach, waiting for things to occur, and then trying to call back our personnel. So what we did was, we did an internal meeting and decided to recall about two-thirds of our department, and the reason we didn't recall everybody was because we wanted to leave a reserve of a third of the department for relief the next day, in the event we needed them. So we got together, we developed an incident action plan, which is a common formality within any large incident, being wildland fires, or large mudslides, or any casualty incident. So we had an incident action plan, which has never been developed for this, that laid out who, who was in charge of what, who was on what engine, and their, their specific assignments. So each engine, or each station was upstaffed with two fire engines. Normally it only has one, so we had two fire engines, and then we had additional personnel on those engine companies also. Some of the calls that we went on are standard storm calls, however, they do take up the personnel and the engine companies. A lot of it was, there was some localized flooding within businesses and homes, and some of that was due to clogged gutters that could be prevented by homeowners if they did, you know, pre-plan and, and clear their gutters. Other things that, that were unforeseen, that we know that are occurring are down trees into power lines. Just a note to everybody, power lines are extremely, extremely dangerous. If you step on them, you, you have a good chance of dying. They are, they have a lot of electricity going through them, so a lot of people don't, don't realize that, that power lines are extremely dangerous. So if anyone sees any power lines laying down, stay away from them, please. The operations went smooth. We didn't anticipate on running as many calls as the storm was predicting, however, it was a good test run for us, and a good thing for us to fine-tune some of our, some of our operations for the next storm. One of them being the department website with the creek gauges, that is extremely, extremely popular now. We had about 13,500 hits in, in one hour on it, and unfortunately that overloaded the system, and a lot of the hits were from, not from Fairfax and some more sleepy hollow, they were from, from Sannerfell and other, other districts where people were just fairly interested in what was going on. We actually had some hits from Canada and Mexico, so what we're trying to do, or what we did do is we upgraded our, our website service, so -- So, what we're trying to do, or what we did do is we upgraded our website service so it can accommodate those extra people hitting on the website. And speaking of the website, if anybody's interested, Chief Moran mentioned about people wanting to help. We do have an active CERT program and an active Get Ready program. These are all programs that train the public on how to better prepare themselves and better prepare their neighbors. So, if you can find the links to that on our website at www.rossvalleyfire.org.
Thank you. And are we going to have our speaker from the county first?
Yes, I asked the county to send, and it's Ursula, ooh, I forget your last name, but with the emergency operation center-
So, you need to press the button so we can hear you? Thank you.
Okay, you can hear me? So, do I address you?
You address us, but speak loud enough so everyone can hear.
Okay.
And also give your name, please.
My name is Ursula Hanks. I work for the Office of Emergency Services under the Sheriff's Division. And this is a great segue on preparedness that I'm really going to put emphasis on on my very short presentation this evening. And then if there's a few minutes of time where people would like to ask questions, I think we have a few minutes for that. So, we also are responders to emergencies, but we're more the behind-the-scenes planners and organizers and coordinators of what goes on in the field when the response happens. We work with our partners like Ross Valley Fire and all of our agencies throughout the county. Everybody becomes partners in an event such as we experienced in December. And I'm going to not talk about fire because that's your other big hazard here, but stay on track with the storm. And right now, we're in flood flash warning mode, so be prepared, and, you know, we may have to do it all over again. And therefore, because you're first responders and us behind-the-scenes coordinators, we prepare as best as we can in the work that we do. And that's our job to plan, to coordinate, and be in a state of readiness to open our EOC. The job for community members really is very, very basic. We ask that people take the responsibility to be personally prepared. Because first responders, when they ask you, for instance, "I heard that the Fairfax Town Hall almost went underwater. I mean, the creek came really high and I was very close." Imagine a much worse event where we had to evacuate people in Fairfax, and the notice may be very, very short. Your first responders, their job is to coordinate this, make sure that people's lives are saved. That's it. Beyond that, it's the responsibility of personal preparedness with each individual who lives here, works here, plays here. And so, we try to raise the awareness, and OADS does a lot of that with public information offerings, and we support the Get Ready and the CERT programs throughout the county. It's now a county-wide program. The links can be found very easily, Get Ready Moran. And then the FEMA site is also an excellent tool to go to online for all kinds of tips for specialized cases, people with disabilities, the children, pets, how many people have pets nowadays? Just about every other person. And all the variations of the household that the membership might be composed of. And we urge people to work with their neighbors and get involved because that works best, and lives are saved that way. There's living proof that CERT groups do save lives because they're highly trained and skilled. And even just the Get Ready, if you save your own life, which is more important, so you can help someone else. So, the life-saving is the same exact mission that our first responders have, and it's just another cascading kind of an effort to remain safe in this beautiful county that for the most part is safe, but then suddenly a storm comes. So, are there any questions?
We're not going to take questions right now.
Oh, okay.
But we'll go, I just want to ask, I see some people leaving. Frank, is it okay if we move your presentation till after we do item sixteen? It should be relatively quick, so we, I see some of the kids leaving. So, as soon as we're done with this presentation, can we move on to item sixteen, Frank? Is that all right with you?
Would you have to move?
We're just going to move item sixteen. Can we move it ahead of you? Okay, we'll do that then.
May I say just that I'm going to leave a bunch of brochures behind because they're good reminders, and the same stuff is all online, but it's a good reminder. And also, if you're already prepared, just leave them with your neighbors and friends. Thank you.
Okay, we can put those out, you can put those out on that thing in the hallway, and then we can pick them up and bring them to Town Hall. So, Garrett, do you want to quickly cover Department of Public Works?
Sure. In terms of Public Works, really prepping for a storm is really cleaning the storm drains and the street gutters. And so, they pretty much focus on that prior to the event. I think we purchased four thousand sandbags and brought in thirty cubic yards of sand for the residents and businesses. During the event, we have the crews on standby. I mean, they're on call any time if they get a call from PD. And so, coordination works really well between Public Works, Fire, and the police, so pretty well-prepared. I think the crews know exactly what they need to do in prepping for the storm, so that's something we're pretty good at. In terms of the event, there were some power outages, street closures. We did have a tree fall, did have one street washed out. But other than that, I think we did pretty well, given what they were talking about in terms of the storm's effects. But that's pretty much Public Works' report.
Okay, and I just want to emphasize that Department of Public Works was out all during the holidays when other town staff were off. So, they were out there slugging in the creeks. I think the fire was also in the creeks helping. So, any questions of the council? And then we'll open it to some public comment.
Great presentation. I just wanted to underline how important CERT is, and even Get Ready is a step towards that. Get Ready's just a couple hours, CERT's a weekend. Fairfax Volunteers also tries to coordinate stuff during the '05 flood. Did a lot there. And, yeah, really, it's just, you know, this was a, down at the sand pile there, I think I'm the only one up here anyway that lives on the creek, but, you know, water moves a lot of places besides the creek too, and certainly saw a lot of mutual acquaintances at the sandbag pile. But it's a good way to, it's kind of a heads-up to, as a practice training. I mean, I don't think this next storm is going to be, you know, twelve inches, famous last words. But, I don't know, it's good to just stay aware of things, so.
Thank you. Others on the council want to comment? Okay, so, any public comment? I just want to emphasize that we do have an item on implementing disaster preparedness outreach later on in the agenda, so we're not going to be covering that at this point. But any public comment on these presentations? Okay, with that, let's move on to item sixteen. Thank you, Frank, for your indulgence. And I'm not sure who is going to do the staff report on item sixteen.
I'll take it. You know, over the last couple of years, or really even longer than that, I think that many of us have been sitting here and out in the audience have heard much made about the role of youth in our community. And how do we respect them and garner their voice and bring it into the conversation of Fairfax? And an article popped up in the New York Times back in mid-January about a couple of communities, none in California, but one particularly in Maryland and another in other parts of the states, in which the concept of bringing sixteen and seventeen-year-olds into the vote, giving them the franchise, as they say, the opportunity to, if it went forward in Fairfax, the opportunity to vote on council member elections and to vote on our ballot measures that we have as well. Anybody who's read them would know that the ballot measures themselves really strive to be as clear and accurate and transparent as possible, and certainly not beyond the good talent of a sixteen or seventeen-year-old to understand them. And as for voting for council members, it can only benefit the community to have sixteen and, and if any of you have had teenagers of that age, you can know that adults have a certain way of appreciating conversation with candidates standing for election. Try to BS a sixteen or seventeen-year-old, and I think that they will snuff it out in fairly short order. It can only benefit, only benefit, I think, our election process. But that's not what this is about. This really is about beginning that conversation. And chatting at the beginning of this with Vice Mayor Goddard, we thought that we would give ourselves a good two years before the November 2017 election to look at the myriad issues that are out there, not only to speak to the youth of the community and other community members, but also to see the mechanics of this are going to be interesting as well. So, we will have to visit with the registrar and have our ears bent by her wisdom. There are no doubt potential legal queries that could come up over this, and council will no doubt apprise us of them as we go forward. I guess if I had to pick one thing, I was, in doing this research, I was struck by the comments of the late Senator Edward Kennedy, which I put into the memorandum back in 1970. And I grant you, the times are different now. We were in the midst of a war. We were drafting eighteen-year-olds and sending them to far-off places to kill people, and yet they couldn't vote on that. This is entirely, I appreciate the difference. But I thought his words are, you know, sometimes a different time, but the same words. And when he said, you know, "The time's come to lower the voting age and thereby bring American youth into the mainstream of our political process," that's exactly what we want to do. On the very day that we forwarded, that Renee and I forwarded this to the manager, UC Davis came out with a report on election participation between eighteen- and twenty-four-year-olds in the midterm, and I don't really think it could have been worse. If memory serves me, it was eight percent. Eight percent! And I've sort of scratched my head and wondered, why is that? There were important, there was a governor's race, there were propositions, there were major issues on that. There were ballot measures dealing with, you know, drought and finance. I mean, you know, significant issues that affect us all. And I thought to myself, well, what was it like to be an eighteen-year-old leaving for college back in 1976? And I was thinking, well, I had a few things on my mind, and that was before I left. And then when I got there, I had a few other things on my mind as I arrived. It was not easy to get an absentee ballot then, and they've made it a touch easier, but it's still, you have to work at it. And so, in the mix, in the maelstrom of your life at that time, you're expected to go and vote as well. And I thought to myself, what if you tried to do for elections what I think the schools have done so successfully with recycling? Find me a fourth grader, find me any kid who would take a bottle or a can and throw it away. I've seen them put it in their pocket and walk it to a recycling. It's beyond second nature at this point. You're a pariah if you don't recycle effectively. Well, the same thing here. Stardom at sixteen or seventeen, it seems to me, and it will become implicated into their, part of their year. This is what I do. This is my responsibility as a member of my community, my Fairfax community. And also, I might say, from having had the great pleasure to go into Drake teacher Frances South, who's here tonight's class, pretty much every year for the last X years, I got to tell you, I think they're ready for it. I think that their questions to me over the years, not uniformly, but generally, have been cogent, to the point, direct, not taking a lot of BS if I don't give a good, straight answer. I think the time's come to have the conversation. We'll go forward for two years. If the council is generous enough to set up the subcommittee with Renee and myself, we'll report periodically on legal issues and registrar issues, and our conversations with students and community members will come back. And if we make the case, then the council will have the opportunity, if we decide to go forward, to see if this is a good idea or not. But I've spoken too long. Renee?
Well, I'll speak very shortly. What interested me in the opening of this as a discussion is the opportunity for our schools, the opportunity for our educators, to actually teach our young people while they're still here and they're still with us about the world that we constantly say they are inheriting from us and they better fix. So, often I look and I go through the course, you know, the options for what kind of classes that kids can take at Drake. You've got mock trial and debate and student senate and leadership and associated student body, and you have an opportunity in a small community like this, and a community that, as Larry Bragman so aptly stated, we have to keep going and pushing and forging new ideas and new frontiers. And why not have this conversation? If only a conversation to start talking about the real world with our kids and what kind of effect they can have on the real world in real time, right now, in a place that will listen to them. They know things that we don't know. The technology right now that is going on in this young community is beyond any of our, let's say, over fifty wildest dreams. So, I look for any opportunity to hear them and to make them feel empowered enough that their voices count to step up and be heard. So, I really appreciated being approached with this idea from David to start a discussion. And if it's only a discussion, it allows our schools to engage in something super-real and that I think it's time to engage in. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Other members, John?
Yeah, sure. It's great that this is coming forward. I think it's a really good idea. If anybody has any doubts about how or where kids are, I mean, my son went through the Comic-Con program at Drake where every election cycle, they're assigned to make a little documentary thing for one side or another of the various ballot issues, and then answer questions from the audience. And I tell you, the kids in that program knew a whole lot more than the parents of those kids did. And the parents of those kids or that knew about the program from having older kids often went back there to find out about the issues and hear a pretty well-rounded debate about the different questions that were on the ballot. And it's really an educational service for the community in that sense. So, those kids know what they were talking about, and they had opinions, and I think what better time to try to enable them to have that power to vote and become a part of the process rather than kind of saying, oh, that's all well and good, now go off to college and get distracted? I think that's a very good point, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Other members of the council? Peter?
Yes, thank you. It's a very, very intriguing idea. I especially like the concept of engaging young people in local issues. I think back to when I came of age and my awareness of political issues was more about the national scene, the Jimmy Carter election, and when I could first vote. And I knew nothing about my local town. So, I think it's great if we can engage young people, especially to have an awareness of the local community. And I'm intrigued about the, some of the legal issues too, if we can actually extend the franchise to sixteen-year-olds. I'm looking forward to hearing and learning more about that.
Okay, well, I have a suggestion. Having been a chief inspector at Manor School for two precincts for seven years, I got to see kind of who came in to vote. And unfortunately, and maybe this is why it's a good time to really look at this, eighteen-to-twenty-nine-year-olds don't vote very frequently. What I saw was the primary where now President Obama was in, a lot of younger people came in, a lot of people hadn't voted for twenty years. And also, we had pretend ballot sheets for the little kids at the school, and they really enjoyed that, and their teachers would take them back and go over the voting process. So, I know that there's kind of a mix of that, but what I would suggest is before we embark on doing a lot of legal research is meeting, and I don't think you necessarily have to meet with the registrar, but Colleen Casanda, who runs a lot of the precincts, might be a good one to start with to find out the ins and outs and how it would work, and then embark on doing some financial research as well as our town council doing more research on it. So, we can find out what the pros and cons are from the registrar's perspective. So, I think it's a good idea. I think also Garrett's going to speak later about starting Peak Democracy for engaging the public for at least one of our items, and that might be another area where we can engage all members of the community, and they can be under sixteen as well. So, that's going to be another avenue. So, I think it's a good idea. And let's move it to public comment. I know we have a lot of folks here, and I did promise people would be out by eight, so I'm wrong, but pretty close after eight. So, if you'd like to come up and speak, that would be great. up and speak, that would be great. And if you could state your name and your address, if you feel comfortable doing so.
Hi, my name is Jack Parnell-Wolff. I'm a senior at Drake High School. I'm actually in Ms. Salh's class, and I spoke to Mr. Weinsdorf as he came and spoke to us in our government class. I just turned eighteen, actually, last Thursday, so this is not necessarily applying just to me. But a few months ago, my friends and I were having a conversation about what we want to do when we turn eighteen. And of course, you know, the joke's, I'm going to go buy cigarettes or a lottery ticket, and now I can call myself in sick for school, and you know, I get to do that for myself. All jokes aside, eventually it got to the point where I was kind of frustrated that the ability to vote was not really in the kids' top five, you know, priorities, as when you're eighteen, you know, it's the first thing you're going to get, is your registration papers. That's something that has been important in my family, and I feel should be a lot more important to kids that are turning eighteen. Really, too often, I've heard the quote, you know, when kids are talking about is, I don't bother with politics. And that was really an argument that I got in with a friend, is so many kids, you know, think about it in relation to just, you know, I'm eighteen, now I guess I can vote for the next president. But what, you know, kids overlook a lot is the effect of local government, and especially how in our everyday lives, you know, things that we can vote on in Fairfax specifically are going to be, you know, changing how we operate in our everyday lives, and especially affecting other kids of our age. So when I see kids that are saying, you know, I don't bother in politics, it kind of gets under my skin, because it's something that people don't really realize the necessity of, and especially when we're working in environments where it becomes, you know, kind of necessary to work with, sorry, I completely lost my train of thought. Yes. Really, I'll go on this. If sixteen and seventeen-year-olds could vote, really, you're doing a lot of good things for us. You're encouraging participation in the local community, which is something that I don't think you can ever have too little of. But it empowers kids to also speak for what they want. There's a lot of kids that don't think that, you know, at sixteen or seventeen, they have anything to say, because you don't, you don't have the ability to vote or say anything, for that matter. So with that, you come a boost of the youth voice, you know, it's, I didn't even know that it was such a low rating of eight percent for kids from eighteen to twenty. That, I mean, at that point, it's kind of frustrating to know that we have no representation in terms of, you know, the numbers of people that are voting. And what you're also doing is you're polling in parents that might not vote as much. You're polling in people that are not going to participate in discussion, you know, you can see it having some dinnertime discussion. If you're sixteen years old and you realize that you might be able to vote on something that can help you or help your friends, you might want to bring that up with your parents and kind of at least encourage that kind of discussion. So there's not really an area where I see this not benefiting people, if you get it to be in a younger age. Really, I want to be able to talk to kids in a few years, and when they're turning eighteen, you know, I want them to, the first thing that they're thinking about is that I now have the ability to vote, because, you know, for the last two years, in Fairfax specifically, I've been participating in this discussion. And if we, you know, start that at this age, it's going to be incredibly helpful, not only for like, you know, in the long run as our nation as a whole, but in terms of kids in Fairfax. And you're going to grow up with kids that are going to want to come back to this town and are going to want to contribute to it and make it a better place. So I know firsthand that if you give kids the tools to participate in this environment and to, you know, discuss this with you guys, kids will come out. You know, they're going to drop that phrase that they don't bother with politics, which is, you know, something that I really think is important at this age. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi, my name's Francie Salh. I think Jack just got some extra credit. I teach at Sir Francis Drake High School, and I have been teaching there for eleven years, teaching government and US history. And I think this idea is so worthy of study. And I'll share with you an anecdote. This past November, I was voting, and I voted at Manor School. I live at On Oak Manor. And I always, I don't vote absentee. I like to go to the place, and I always bring my ten-year-old son along with me so he can experience it. And this time, I was in the booth, and next to me, I heard the voice of a young man talking to a woman, and then I realized, he's telling her about all the different initiatives. And I'm thinking, well, this is interesting. Here's someone who's gone to vote, and she doesn't know about these things. And I sort of peer back, and it's one of my students who's talking to his mom. And we had done all of this work, and so he knew about every initiative on the ballot. This is in Comic-Ed, right? Same program. And, but he couldn't, he couldn't vote on anything. And I thought, how different the experience would be for kids if they had somewhat of a say. Because most kids will turn eighteen after the election. They have a handful every year who are early birthdays. And then they go off to college, and yeah, you get an absentee ballot. I mean, somehow, it's not a top priority. But when we get them hooked early, because I know for me, once I started voting, I haven't missed an election since, because it just felt so powerful, like, wow, I, you know, I get to have a say in this. And I would love if I could do that with my students, so I'm not just saying, learn about these issues because they're important, but these ones here on this part of the ballot, this is your town. And in so many ways, what happens here in our town has far more impact on the kids than what's happening in Sacramento or in Washington DC. And I think it would feel very empowering to them, and it might get them hooked to be civics nerds, which is what I'm always, always hoping for. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
My name is Sasha Cherapanoff, and I'm speaking on behalf of Zoe Harris and the Drake Student Body. Zoe Harris is a student on, is a, is part of the student senate and on the leadership team. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it here tonight because she has too much AP Calc homework. I believe that extending the voting age in Fairfax to sixteen and seventeen-year-olds would be a positive change for a few specific reasons. Lowering the minimum voting age allows youth to have a voice in their community. Based on the 2010 census for the town of Fairfax, approximately nineteen point three percent of the population is under the age of eighteen. Extending the vote to sixteen and seventeen-year-olds will target a new demographic in the Fairfax community, bringing with it a new perspective and the ability for youth to politically impact their community. The right to vote is a critical method for individuals to make a difference and affect the policies in their town. Although teenagers in Fairfax and Marin County in general are often encouraged to have a voice and share their ideas, doing so can prove challenging. However, I think that it should not be so difficult, and that the community does not need to adhere to the procedures of antiquated laws and policies. I would argue that today's teenagers are exposed to much more, at an earlier age than teenagers when older laws and policies were passed. Current sixteen and seventeen-year-olds have developed and manifested the maturity and sense of responsibility of the eighteen-year-olds and even earlier. Teenagers now have increased means and desire to understand the issues in Fairfax. They have personal perspective, and there should be no reason that they should not be allowed to vote and voice their opinion. I am currently a twelfth grader at Sir Francis Drake High School. In all my social studies classes, especially upper-level courses that consist of sixteen-to-eighteen-year-olds, we have discussed various local, state, and federal elections. The ability to vote in Fairfax elections will allow such students to put into practice what they have been learning, and will likely result in a greater interest in elections. Beyond putting the schoolwork into practice, the fact that sixteen and seventeen-year-olds are currently taking classes when they are, where they are learning about politics will be a benefit to the community at large. Teenagers will show new energy and new voice to the local elections. Students who are motivated to educate themselves and voice, and vote will take the time to understand the issues as well as recognize their impact in the community. In short, I'm confident that extending the voting age to sixteen and seventeen-year-olds in Fairfax elections will give the vote, the youth a voice in their community, offer a new perspective on various policies and issues, and be of benefit to teenagers as participatory members of society. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Excellent speech. So other speakers on this? Alexander?
Alexander Binick, Seven Meadow Way. I just have a few questions that I don't necessarily expect to be answered tonight, but it's the first I'm hearing and thinking about this. Thinking about something like the referendum that happened in Fairfax here last year, or some years back, the initiative that petitions were circulated for and went on the ballot and passed around, plastic bags in Fairfax. Wondering whether, if this passes, I think to, for there being enough accepted signatures, I don't know if it's something like ten percent of the registered voters or whatever, presumably that would include everyone who were, these additional voters who were registered just for Fairfax, that percentage, and could, then these, these additional voters could vote in those elections, presumably. And could they circulate these petitions? Normally, it's just eighteen and above. So I'm just asking these questions that maybe need to be considered.
I think that's what David and Renee are asking, is to look into this further. So I think you're raising some good questions.
That's all. I don't have more to say. I just, these thoughts came to me, and I think there's some things that people should be looking at as well. Thank you.
So you both would take that under consideration. Other speakers on this topic? So seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council.
I would ask the council to vote in favor of setting up a subcommittee and appointing Vice Mayor Goddard and myself to this council's subcommittee to report periodically, with the goal certainly of having a council vote significantly in advance of the November 2017 Fairfax election.
I would so move that.
I would make a friendly amendment, where the third part of the recommendation was directing staff to research the legal and financial considerations. I think I would just suggest that that should be done, but after there's more work on meeting with the registrar's staff to understand the pros and cons before we embark on extensive research.
I'd support that amendment.
So, so we've got, you made the motion. Anybody want to make a second?
I, all second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So, well, we're a little after eight, but close. Okay, now, we want to call up Frank Egger, is, who's the Fairfax trustee to the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District, but quickly, council?
Hi, yes. I'm the town attorney, but I represent you on a contract basis, and I have other clients. And I just want to disclose that one of my other clients is the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District. And so in order to avoid any appearance of impropriety at all, I'm going to leave the room for the moment.
Okay, thank you, Janet. So if you can hover in the kitchen or something so we can get you back, just to begin the rest of the agenda. Okay, thank you, Frank, and thank you for your indulgence. You need to press the button, though.
The red light is on.
Thank you, Frank.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The last time I appeared before you and reported to you, I brought Phil Smith, then our new manager. He has settled into the job and is doing quite well. Tonight, I presented a written report, and I'll just hit a couple of highlights, and I'll take up too much of your time. You know, like all public agencies, the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control, Vector Control District is underfunded. We're always struggling. What's interesting is today, I attended the Marin Coalition's forum on MCRA. That's the Marin County Employees Retirement Fund operation. It was interesting, the county's unfunded pension and post-employment benefit liabilities are in eight hundred thousand dollar range, and if not addressed, will be heading towards one billion dollars. The Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District is a member of MCRA. The biggest issues facing us this, in the coming years, is our unfunded pension and post-employment retirement liabilities. This past year, this past year, our revenues were, we overspent our revenues by nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. This year's deficit is projected at four to sixty-three thousand dollars, so there's, there is a need to increase revenues. At the last meeting, we addressed these issues, and the district is looking at options, increasing the budget by as much as thirty-eight percent, and raising taxes by as much as fifty-nine percent, which I happen to disagree with. I think, I think we've got to take a look at the operation and possibly change the way we do business. The tax increase they're looking at is in a nine to twelve-dollar range. It doesn't sound like a lot, but one, the total tax is around twenty-two dollars. A twelve, of twelve-dollar increase is quite, is substantial. You know, if every, if every agency, taxing agency in the county here increased their tax bill by fifty-nine percent, there'd be another taxpayer revolt, like the Prop 13 was. We're doing some great work. For the past ten years, the district has had a special agreement with West Marin, where we use, reduce toxic products when we're dealing with mosquitoes and pests. And this year, we just extended it for an additional year. The communities of West Marin are quite concerned about toxics, and our agency is considered one of the most progressive in the state in dealing with non-toxic applications. I just, I was in Monterey at a mosquito conference. And so what's interesting is, is pesticide companies are finally realizing that people of California are really concerned about, about products that are being used to control mosquitoes, for one. And here in Marin, we have forty thousand acres of farmland under organic, it's qualified for organic status. And so those farmers are really concerned about the products we use. And there are some, some great new products out. There is what's called Merus. It's an adulticide. It's produced by Clark. You know, generally, we look at Clark going, oh, those are the bad guys that run around and spray bad stuff. But Clark is, I guess, has kind of seen the light, too. And they're looking at a pesticide that is called OMRI listed, it's listed. And that's the Organic Materials Review Institute that approves certain pesticides for certain uses. Another one is Application Dynamics, and they've got a product called Paramount, and that is totally organic. And it, and they hope to have their certification within the next couple of months. So, so the industry is changing, and Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District has been one of the mosquito agencies in the state that has pushed for, for these kinds of less toxic alternatives to dealing with pests. What else? Well, I guess that's about it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. There are two other mosquito district trustees, here and I, who disagree with some of my numbers, but, but I've done the math, and we're talking thirty-eight percent budget increase and fifty-nine percent tax increase option. That would be a Prop 218 process, and all property owners will be allowed, will get a vote on that. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks for coming. It's been a while. So I read very carefully your memorandum, and what I take away from it is that we have an agency that has managed its budget badly, and is now going to, as you say, raise a tax by fifty-nine percent. You're exactly right about the tax revolt that would happen, perhaps, because I've seen my taxes in the last twenty years go up about, about that much with school district stuff. So I know the community is getting extraordinarily concerned about that tax bill that arrives in November and the sticker shock that they get. I was heartened to read, and I know that you are promoting quite wisely the use of non-pesticides use. But the one thing I was reading is this, is that you are representative. You represent Fairfax. There are all these other people which represent all these other communities, twenty-two of them or something?
Twenty, there's twenty-four trustees representing eleven cities in Marin, nine cities in Sonoma County, and, and four trustees from both counties.
Tell me, what do we get out of this?
I'm sorry?
What do we get out of this? What do we get? We, they're not going to spray pesticides here, because there'll be a holy terror come down on their heads. So what are, what do we get?
Well, you're, you're getting, you're getting services from, from dealing with, with storm drains, catch basins. That's done on a regular basis. We get, we do get requests for service in Fairfax, and we do come into Fairfax and provide services. We have an educational program where we encourage folks to, you know, to dump the standing water in their yards. We have, we have a staff person assigned to this area. We have a staff person assigned to this area, and they're down here on a regular basis, and we're constantly taking mosquito samples, trapping mosquitoes and taking samples. You know, the West Nile virus has raised its ugly head in other parts of the state, not so much Marin-Sonoma, we're in pretty good shape here, but that's because we stay on top of it.
So the question I have, are we getting value for our tax dollars? If you had your magic wand wish, would you say, no, we really don't even want to be a member of this organization anymore? Or do you feel that the Fairfax taxpayers, even at, you know, 59 percent higher in the low twenties per year, are getting value for that money?
Well, our current tax is about $22, I think it's about a $12 assessment and about $10 on the ad valorem tax. And you've been getting good value. One of the issues that we probably should have been tougher on is having a better handle on our budget and controlling the operation. You know, with 24 members, it's kind of difficult. Sometimes I'm a pretty lonely voice up there, but, you know, it's a democratic process, and everyone gets a vote, so.
So you feel from your experience, and you've been doing this forever, that this organization is one that is good for Fairfax, and that we're getting value for the taxes that we currently spend, and if there's, if it passes, as they usually do with Prop 218, that we would get consummate value at an even higher rate?
No, tonight, I'm not espousing that tax rate increase. You know, I like to see us handle our budget issues within the current tax rate, or maybe a slight increase, but not a huge increase.
Good point. Let me just back it off. For the amount that we're paying today?
Yes.
Is this a good?
I think, yes, we're getting good value, we are.
So it's good for Fairfax to be a member?
It's good for Fairfax, because we're not being sprayed with toxic chemicals. You know, we're dealing with mosquitoes on a less toxic, in a less toxic manner. So for Fairfax, it is good benefit, it is.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Other members of the council? First of all, Frank, I want to thank you for representing us, and having lived in the South and seeing the trucks that just spray the whole area, and the kids and the dogs, I think your lonely voice, I'm sure there are others in Marin, are keeping us safe from some pretty toxic pesticides being used against mosquitoes. So I want to thank you for your service and continuing to represent us and fighting, you know, to keep us using safer products. And I agree that this is good value for the town, it will be, you know, if you can keep fighting a way to look at other ways to handle the budget issues, we would appreciate that and keep fighting to keep us using safer products. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the public who want to speak on this matter?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, my name is Lebron, and I'm appointed by the Town of Belvidere to the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito Vector Control District. And accompanying me this evening is Yvonne Van Dyk, the current president of the board. I wanted to first express our appreciation to Mr. Egger, my friend, longtime trustee of 10 years, and I know he's served Fairfax for many years as the mayor, and we're quite proud of the service that he does for the mosquito district. And I can assure you, he speaks well for your community, and has provided admirable service to the board of trustees. However, I did want to correct a couple of his figures. The $900,000 expenditure that was shown last year was not actually expended. Under the new GASP rules, our auditor required that we showed what we should be paying if we were to be paying down our pension requirements. In fact, the district ended up with a surplus in its budget last year. There was one other figure I wanted to address. The 38 percent increase this year would have to do with, in fact, what we're proposing to pay down on our pension liabilities. There is, in Mr. Egger's report, a comment about proposing to reduce our costs by going into association with other districts, specifically Mendocino County. I think the public should know there is no currently mosquito district in Mendocino County, so we would be taking on a huge responsibility with no district. There would be the impossibility of actually taking on that responsibility if anyone was so inclined. Mr. Egger also admirably looking for ways to cut our costs down, has indicated that perhaps we should cooperate and work as a joint district with Napa County. The Napa County office is many, many miles from our office, I believe 45 miles, and there are only eight people that work in that district, a rather large district, so again, it would be a losing proposition. We appreciate the creative thinking, is what we expect and look for in trustees from the various communities, and we're glad that Frank is thinking of those proactive concepts. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of the council? Okay.
I have a question.
Peter.
I guess, actually, I wanted to ask Frank.
Frank, would you come up to the podium, please?
I didn't get a chance to. And Frank, my question was just, you talked about these organic options, and I'm wondering if those are currently in use or looking to be implemented. I couldn't tell from the report up there.
Okay, one, the one by Clark, we are going to use it in West Marin, and the West Marin Mosquito Council has agreed that that is an acceptable product to be used in West Marin. It is Merus, M-E-R-U-S, Merus 2.0, it's an adulticide. And what that's going to be used is in septic tanks. Now, we do have septic tanks here in Fairfax, you know, some of the older homes and some out in the Cascades, they do have septic tanks. And so, I don't know if it's a problem with the mosquitoes, but in West Marin, it is. And so what we do is we put a pellet type of a pesticide into the septic tank, and it supposedly kills the, prevents mosquitoes, kills the mosquitoes, prevents them from hatching in there. One of the problems that folks in West Marin were concerned with is the water that leaches out of the septic tank works its way to the creek, and then from the creek into the bay, so into the oceans, and so that's where this Merus product, we believe, will be a great improvement. It would allow us to treat the septic tanks with something that is acceptable by organic, some organic standards.
Thank you, Frank. So other comments on this presentation? So seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, any other comments? Are we good? Okay, so thank you. Thank you very much, Frank. So moving on, we were going to take a break, but we already took one, so we'll wait to take a quick break. I just want to make a quick announcement. Jody Timms wasn't able to make it for public expression, and just a quick announcement, the World Health Organization today designated Fairfax as an age-friendly city. So yay, Fairfax! Let's all take that senior yoga class. Okay, so let's move on to the consent calendar. I want to first ask if there's an item, I'd like to pull off the consent, but I'd like to see what other council members have to say.
Number nine, we have a member of the community that would like to talk on that. And item number six, I believe Larry Bragman wanted to give us an update regarding.
Yes, that's the item I wanted to pull. So items six and nine will pull off consent, and I'd like to take up item six first. Alexander would like to get home at a reasonable time. And so what we'll do is cover, so items six and nine will, oh, go ahead, Garrett.
So as a suggestion, you could pull items six and nine, and then just go ahead and consider a motion.
That's where I was going.
Well, consider a motion to approve the consent calendar, and you can hear a public comment, and then adopt the consent calendar, and then you can move on to six and nine.
That was exactly, we are on the same page. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar, items four, five, seven, eight, and 10.
Somewhat.
Second?
I'll second.
Seems to be a comment from the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy, Cindy Swift?
Cindy Swift, Fairfax, I just had a question on number 10, the report on the installation of the bike racks in town. It wasn't clear from the report where the bike racks were going to be in some cases. Are they all going to be on the sidewalks?
Go ahead and just answer that.
Sure, attached to the report, there's actually a map. In some cases, it'll be sidewalks, in some cases, they're in parks. We actually just installed five racks at the ball field, so it kind of varies depending on the location.
Okay, because when I looked at each of the installations, some of them mentioned that they were going to be installed between two parking spaces. So I wasn't clear whether that meant on the sidewalk between two parking spaces or actually on the roadway. So that's what I was asking.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's the sidewalk is where it'd be installed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak on one of the items?
That's number nine, sir.
Number nine, we're pulling item nine from the consent. So first, we're, sorry, Cindy, I didn't see you. So what we're going to do is, we have a motion, Winesoff, second, Goddard, to approve the rest of the consent calendar. We've pulled items six and nine off consent. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so let's move on to item six, which is authorize the mayor to prepare and send a letter to PG&E regarding smart meters. So do you want to do a quick staff report on this, Garrett?
You may recall, back in December, then Vice Mayor Bragman made a, presented to the council an update on the petition to the California Public Utilities Commission regarding smart meters, deployment of smart meters in Fairfax. Fairfax was one of several communities and other entities to be part of this petition. Then Vice Mayor Bragman reported that a judge made a ruling indicating that local governments don't have the right to collectively opt out, and they could charge fees, and at that point, it was unclear when the CPUC would consider that decision. They actually have and adopted that decision, and that the result of this was, the mayor's was indicating that perhaps we should send a letter to PG&E regarding the decision. But I understand that former council member Bragman has some suggestions related to this item?
Maybe what we should do, rather than bringing it to the council right now, is hear the update from Larry Bragman.
So, yeah, thanks for pulling the item, and I just, things have changed a little bit since I reported on it, I guess, back in December. What's happened is that two of the petitioners, there was probably a dozen petitioners other than the Town of Fairfax. Town of Fairfax petitioned CPUC with Town of Ross and the county of Marin. Santa Cruz County was also a separate petitioner, and then various private nonprofit groups were also petitioners in that same case. And the CPUC board actually did approve the tentative ruling of the administrative law judge that was handling the case, and so we thought that was going to be it, that was going to be the final decision, the final pronouncement. But it turns out, there is a little wrinkle in the procedures at CPUC where an appellant or petitioner can file for rehearing. So that kind of keeps the ball in the air when that happens. So there was a 60-day window, 30-day window, I'm not sure which. And luckily, two of the petitioners, two of the private petitioners, EMF Safety Network and Ecological Options Network, did file petition for rehearing. So what that means is that the case is not final yet, until the commission either rejects or accepts the petition for rehearing, or I think it may be a 60- or 90-day window that lapses, and then it's considered to be rejected by operation of law. So at this point, it's premature for us to be going out to PG&E hat in hand to try to negotiate some kind of a resolution. What I would suggest instead is that the Town of Fairfax write a letter in support of the petitions for rehearing. I've talked to two of the petitioners, I've talked to Ecological Options Network, and I've talked to Sandy Moore, who's the chief executive officer of EMF Safety Network, and they would like our support. And so it would just be sort of reframing our letter in a way more supportive of the continuation of the litigation at the CPUC. So that's what I would suggest that we do, it's just sort of pivoting slightly in hopes that we can, you know, capture the CPUC's attention one more time. And the other thing I wanted to leave you with is that in the batch of 65,000 emails that were released by PG&E in the San Bruno case, we found some interesting emails about Fairfax. And apparently, some of the commissioners and some of the staffers at the CPUC were having conversations with the utility about Fairfax. We know, we now know that PG&E was having ex parte conversations with the chair of the CPUC, Michael Peavy, while this was all pending. So I'd like to leave these with the clerk, so that we can enter these into the record, so you can see really that the process, and I think the decision that it led to, does need to be looked at again, and hopefully will at least make a record, administrative record, to do that in the next few months. And so anyway, my suggestion would be that we just kind of pivot on that letter, and let's do a letter in support of the petitions for rehearing.
So just a question for, oh, I'm sorry, do other members of the council have questions? Go ahead, Peter.
Larry, would a comment letter, would that be something akin to like an amicus brief that you might file in an appellate?
Yes, yeah. I mean, I think there may be a way that the town could actually join, but I think really the more expeditious thing to do for us would be to, it would be akin to an amicus brief, we would just be reiterating our position and our desire to see that the issue actually get a full and fair hearing at the CPUC.
And do you know?
Peter, just let me interrupt, since you weren't on the council. We sent a letter to CPUC back in, I believe, end of December, and so I think what we would do is, I'm not thinking that we would put together an amicus brief, I don't think we have the financial resources to do that, but I think what we could do is reframe that letter in support of the petitioners, as long as we have the information, those petitions. But that's where I, I'm sorry for interrupting, but you may not have been privy to that letter. So I think we could easily tweak that letter to just have the same content with support for the petitioners.
Yeah, and I would be happy to work with you, or, you know, help you recast that letter, and, you know, one of the things that's sort of been swept under the rug here is that CPUC also investigated the surveillance of activists who oppose this measure, actually ended up fining PG&E, I think somewhere up around $1 million. So the whole process here really needs to be looked at again, and I think in fairness to that, I'm hoping that the CPUC will at least consider rehearing the matter.
With the new president, we can only hope.
Maybe so.
So other things for the council on this matter? So my comment would be just that we reframe the letter that we sent to CPUC, I think it was the end of December, early January, and probably all we need is really more information on the specific who those petitioners are, but we can talk more after this or subsequent offline.
Thank you, mayor, thank you.
Okay, and then other? Okay, and then other speakers? Frank? Thank you, Larry.
Yes, Mayor, again Frank Egger, thirteen mile away, Fairfax. And, you know, the Fairfax Town Council needs to be congratulated for really being on a cutting edge of, of what's turned into a nationwide issue as far as smart meters and, and the impacts on health and, you know, Fairfax was in it in the very beginning. And there are literally hundreds of communities throughout this country that are raising the kinds of questions now that Fairfax got onto, what, four years ago? And, and when, when, when the PG&E person infiltrated the listserv, and so everyone's talking about what's going on with smart meters and come to the Fairfax Council, et cetera, there was a PG&E employee monitoring all those emails and then reporting directly to PG&E. So, so the sixty-five thousand emails that Larry mentioned are, are quite enlightening as to how we as a community were being treated. But thanks to Larry and, and thanks to the council, you've done a great job and hopefully just stay on top of this, not let it go by the boards, but if you can file an amicus brief at some point, it'd be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Other speakers? Mark?
Mark Bell, sixty-three Dominga. I guess my, one of my questions would be, how come all these guys are on the CPUC? Like Peavy are all being bought and paid for, have total conflict of interest and probably offshore bank accounts? Why can't somebody go get them, get them off? You know?
President Peavy is no longer on the PUC.
Oh, Peavy's no longer there?
Yes, he stepped down in December and Michael Picker is now the president of the CPUC.
Okay, and what, what did Picker do before he was there? Well, Peavy used to work for SoCal Edison, right?
Right, but CPUC, there have been other allegations, also the executive director for the CPUC retired in December as well. And so, you know, maybe change is good, maybe a new president will change things.
Okay, good, 'cause, you know, Peavy turned down my two dollar bribe to him, I was really shocked. Thank you.
Alexandra, I know you wanted to speak on this item.
Alexandra Binnick, I would appreciate the opportunity to speak for five minutes on behalf of Detoxics Institute. PG&E has misinformed and misled Fairfax and the public in general about many aspects of smart meters since the very beginning, eight years ago. For example, the head of their smart meter program told us here that each meter pulse, pulses only six times a day, when our own measurements confirmed that it actually pulses thousands of times daily, a fact that a judge eventually forced PG&E to admit. The sixty-five thousand just released emails between PG&E and the CPUC make clear that there was constant illegal behind the scenes coordination of policy between the corporation and its supposed regulators. And the contents of some of these emails are quite informative. For example, even until today, both the CPUC and PG&E claim there's no evidence of health harm from use of smart meters and we should all just assume that everything is fine. But turns out even way back on September third, two thousand and ten, in an illegal backdoor email from CPUC President Peavy to Brian Cherry, the recently fired PG&E Vice President, Peavy wrote, quote, "There really are people who feel pain, et cetera, related to EMF," unquote. Meanwhile, Marzia Zafar, the CPUC's point person regarding smart meters, was in contact behind the scenes, buddy buddy contact with PG&E top dogs, signing her emails Mars. PG&E gave her its recommended line, this is all from these emails, insisting that the smart meters are totally safe, which she parroted word for word, supposedly as the CPUC's independent judgment, at the disinformational meetings held in Fairfax. At the one that November thirtieth, two thousand and ten, she was very frustrated that we in Fairfax were unimpressed with the bull we were being given by herself, PG&E's main smart meter man, later fired by the company for improprieties, and PG&E's traveling scientist for hire. The following day, she complained, she complained to her PG&E handlers that we Fairfax's were, quote, "demonstrating mob mentality in its finest form," unquote. She added that, quote, "The public speakers warned that they will begin to practice public disobedience if smart meter installations began." This leads to the question of why in most other places in Northern and Central California, smart meters have been forced onto unwilling residents, with installers even sneaking back at night and climbing over fences. Yet in contrast, so few smart meters have been installed in Fairfax. Certainly, the passage and renewal of Fairfax's installation moratorium ordinance was an important factor, and I believe it was the first such ordinance in the entire country. So our council and Larry should give yourselves credit for your discernment and your courage. But the reticence on PG&E's part was really about the political situation here rather than primarily the legal one. For one thing, Fairfax already had a unique pre-existing telecommunications facilities ordinance that the company had already violated, and our council bristled about that violation. Secondly, starting early on, our residents educated themselves and came out in force, challenging the assurances from the company and the CPUC. And it was clear that our council was also unified in opposition to forced installations. That unanimity sent PG&E a clear message that if they pushed ahead here, we would not just roll over. This was soon followed by the arrests of two young mothers in West Marin and the constant harassment of PG&E trucks in Fairfax, and the town's position that our police department would respond to resident complaints by asking installers to leave. PG&E realized that the bad press they were already receiving in Fairfax and our militant opposition could interfere with their installations elsewhere. So the company decided it would be best to soft pedal the situation here, to basically leave Fairfax alone. Here's another example of the impact of citizen resistance and bad publicity for the corporation. Even after PG&E and the CPUC slowly came to accept that they would need to allow opting out of smart meters, they claimed that analog meters were no longer available, insisted that the only permissible alternative would be to have the meters broadcast turned off. But that wouldn't eliminate another significant source of EMF exposure from the meter, creating what's known as dirty electricity, having the same negative health consequences. When a Santa Cruz County mother had an electrician replace her smart meter with an analog one, PG&E turned off her home's power during cold rainy winter, just two weeks before Christmas. After being attacked for this heartless behavior by the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, the company relented and decided to permit analog, that is totally non-digital, replacements for everyone throughout its territory. I'm almost done here. Given my observations of PG&E's corporate behavior to date, as well as things emerging in the released emails, I think there's a good chance that if we hold the line here, the company will just not do any more installations in Fairfax. They, as well as the CPUC, don't want any more bad publicity. The company's huge financial penalty for San Bruno isn't final yet, and they're meeting major opposition about relicensing Diablo Canyon. Since two thousand and ten, many additional Fairfax residents have become educated about the problems with smart meters, and many have already chosen to opt out. However, opt out is not a sufficient solution. It doesn't protect vulnerable folks from ambient exposure to their neighbors' meters. It doesn't protect people whose rent includes utilities and who are therefore unable to themselves opt out. It doesn't protect people who can't afford the extortion of opt out fees. It doesn't protect owners, employees, and patrons of commercial businesses because they're not eligible for opt out. And it puts at great risk those who sleep just on the inner wall of dwellings containing a bank of ten to fifty meters. Many of these people have become electrically hypersensitive with awful consequences, and I've met a number of these people, they're really suffering.
Alexandra, you're over five minutes, so if you can wrap it up.
Can I just, couple sentences? Our very best tool going forward is to continue educating more and more of our residents. There's now available an excellent, award-winning film about smart meter problems entitled Take Back Your Power. I would strongly recommend that our council make the women's club available for free for showing of this film and help publicize the event to our residents. In addition, I recommend, and Larry Bragman agrees, that our police department should continue to respond if a resident complains that a smart meter installer is present and won't voluntarily leave. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. And I think we'll probably have to have our council look into whether or not we can enforce the ordinance at this time. But thank you, everyone. Any other speakers on this matter? So I'll just bring it back to the council. I think I can work with Larry on getting the information to add to the letter. And Peter, it sounds like you've expressed an interest in this, maybe you might wanna get up to speed on the smart meter issue because we've, we've lost Larry on, to carry that on the council.
Sure, and I was also gonna offer my, you know, assistance in revising the letter or supplementing the letter too, I'd be very interested in adding to that.
Okay, I think we wanna keep the letter kind of where it is, but maybe we can send it to you and take a look at it and see where the petition support would fit.
Sure.
Renee?
Yeah, I was just gonna request, and actually, before you leave, Larry, I, I think that we obviously have gotten to a very advanced place with this and the history of this. I would venture to guess that there is a huge percentage of our community that has no idea what we're talking about. So I, I would ask, and especially, we have a lot of young families moving in and they really may have a very different idea. So I think it'd be really important right now, as we're going forward, to break it down a little bit, talk about some of what you've learned and present what the different arguments and different sides are, so that we can have a more real, genuine community process moving forward. So I don't know how we would draft that, we could talk about that, but it would be good to have it available as we move forward so we feel more united in our approach.
What about suggestion, Ellen Sanders' suggestion about having the film, maybe sustainable Fairfax could support that for showing the film? And then maybe Larry could do a little spiel in the beginning of it?
Sure, I think any way to create public access to, and, and break it down, I don't know if the film is, is very sort of user friendly for people, or just looking for a way to do that. So I'd be happy to talk with you more about how we could sponsor the film.
Great, thank you. So I guess I need a, a motion? Who wants to make the motion? John?
I would move authorizing the mayor to work with Larry Bragman and preparing or modifying our existing letter, as we've talked about here. Basically in support of the other, oh, I guess they're not appellants, they're petitioners.
Second? Thank you, John. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion Reed, second Lacks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're moving on to item nine. Garrett, would you like to provide the staff report, please?
Item nine just has to do with a report on the temporary bike racks downtown at Bolinas and Broadway. In November two thousand and fourteen, council approved the installation of temporary metal bike rack at that location, corner of Broadway and Bolinas. On two thousand, January two thousand and fifteen, the council requested the staff's report on the bike racks. To date, staff has received both positive and negative comments related to the bike racks. We have pictures showing the bike racks being full, fully used, we have pictures showing them being empty. We do receive complaints related to loading vehicles either sticking out of the yellow zone or double parking in the street. At this point, we think it's still too early to really evaluate the use of the racks and the impacts. We're kind of suggesting you wait a little longer. In this case, we're recommending we report back to you in June with kind of our findings and evaluations at that time, although it'd be up to the council if you thought we should report back sooner. And so that's really the staff report.
And don't you also say in response to complaints that the yellow zone adjacent to the bike rack is not well marked, that you would post now?
Yes.
A commercial loading zone signed showing eight to six p.m. weekdays?
Yes, so we would.
Isn't that in the staff report?
It's in the staff report, so, yes, we were gonna go and officially post it, 'cause right now, we don't have it posted. So once it's posted, you'd have to have commercial plates in order to park in that space, and hopefully people would see that and not park in the space during the hours of restrictions.
Thank you, Garrett. Council members have questions?
No, there was just a gentleman, it's about you, in the, in the audience.
Yeah, I think we're gonna get there. Okay, so, public comment, please? Could you state, turn on the button and state your name, please?
Ed Bocchi, own Navi's Bar in Fairfax. I was here last nut, last month and brought up to you about the bike rack you put in the yellow zone. The whole month says hardly ever used during the week. All the truck drivers have to double park to unload, which makes it hazardous for cars to come around, and they're using the one on Bolinas. Two trucks are trying to park there, they're sticking out in the crosswalk. I think the idea should be, if you're gonna keep going for another five months on that, that you should just put it out on Sundays or on Saturdays and Sundays. During the week, it is not getting that much use. I'm a bike rider myself, so I have nothing against bike riders, but I think we're going overboard, and between Bank Street and down to Bolinas, you have five bike racks already there.
Okay, thank you very much. Other speakers on this?
Pardon me?
I wanted to ask if there are other speakers on this item?
No, there isn't right now.
You don't know, there aren't any other public comments on this item? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bocchi. Let's bring it back to the, the council.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know, Garrett, is this something that can be, hang on, Mr. Bocchi, is this something that can be put up and taken down, or is it so, that would be time, a time grab?
Initially, when staff first recommended it, we thought maybe we could just do it for the weekends. What it entails pretty much is on Friday afternoon, public works crews would have to go and put it out, and then on Monday, they would have to take it back. And because of the weight of that rack, pretty much the easiest way is we attach it to a back hole and take it down the street and take it back. So it is inconvenient, it would take a lot of staff time to do that, but obviously, if the council believes that's the best way to see how well it's used, we can do that. Although it does create a problem, 'cause I, I don't think that's a sustainable thing for us to do.
Renee, I was wondering if you'd like to weigh in? I think you've been kind of monitoring the bike rack.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do keep a close eye on it, and Mr. Bocchi, I appreciate your bringing your suggestion in terms of bringing it on the weekends. I definitely have thought long and hard about how to make that sustainable, as Garrett says, and have weighed it, because I've seen it empty and I've seen it absolutely full. And I've surveyed bikers around the area who still tend to wanna put their bikes up against the window, even though the rack is right there, and gotten feedback about the fancy bikes and they can't use the metal rack and all kinds of different ideas. The idea that behind all of this is that we create passable sidewalks, that we create a downtown that is actually, you know, true to our values as a bike and pedestrian friendly community. And I understand that this is a painful transition, especially with the delivery vehicles. I see the problems very clearly. But I have to say that I support strongly, at least going forward through June, understanding what happens when summer comes, we are a growing biking community, and people are coming in and people are using the racks. So until we're able to look at other options, potentially the parcade, as you raised, as a great suggestion to me not too long ago, I, I'm going to recommend that we keep them where they are and according to staff's suggestion that we mark the commercial zone in the time for the, for the yellow zone on Bolinas. So thank you for your, for bringing your concerns and we'll keep monitoring.
John, did you want to speak on this?
Sure, I mean, I've watched it also carefully, I mean, I've put my bike in there a number of times and it's been the only one. But I've also seen that bike rack full. I mean, it, it really ebbs and flows, and I guess giving it a chance until June may be painful, but it may tell us whether it can work or not. I mean, I think some of the things that you've found, Renee, in talking to bikes, bikers with fancy bikes who, you know, they don't wanna put it in a rack that might scratch them or something like that, you know, that's another, I guess my bike's kind of scratched up already, so I don't worry about it too much. Or, you know, basically the back wheel isn't gonna get scratched, 'cause it's, the rubber tire sticks out. I do, I mean, I felt originally that the commercial zone was not really the right place for it. It's kind of how we ended up with it, because people couldn't agree on, you know, whether it should be a different. it should be a different slot. You know, maybe one of the, you know, passenger car places along Bolinas, the next one after the commercial one is the one that I logically thought it was, but that wasn't getting a lot of, wasn't getting a lot of votes. But yeah, I think we should see it through. I'm open to changing its location to a different spot too, just to see how that works. I mean, we know that it causes a problem with the loading in terms of trucks moving in and out. That said, I've seen trucks in a lot of places that aren't the commercial zone even before that bike rack was there, you know, just because they come in waves. So it's not a really neat, cut and dried set of problems, but, you know, I think it's well worth our while to try to figure out a good way to handle the huge number of bicycles that come through, especially on the weekends.
Okay, well, I'd like to say that I kind of monitor it too and I see bikes there during the week, not a whole lot. So I, even though I realize it is painful, I think we should stay with the six months. I think one of the things along with posting the sign is, you know, double parking and sticking out too much is something, I don't want to have too much police on this, but why don't we monitor that because that's a hazard for people in the area. Not even the business issue, it's a hazard to have trucks sticking out or double parking. So we should be watching that as well. And if need be, if, you know, we ought to, you know, maybe our two avid commuter bicyclists can really kind of check it out during the week as well because I do not want to start something where we're moving it, you know, Fridays and Sundays. I think that puts so much stress on the public works crew, has so much to do. Let's try it out. If we get a lot more complaints, we can revisit this again before June, but I think for now we ought to stay with where we are, potentially look at another location if this really poses a big problem.
Mayor? If I could just clarify one thing. I was not advocating moving it every Friday and Monday morning. I was advocating moving it once to another spot within the.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I'd be very happy to be a one or two-person subcommittee to go out and really look at where there are potentially other options for placing that because I think there definitely are that would relieve the loading zone situation, which I do agree is dangerous. So I will look and I don't know if.
I'd be happy to.
John would like to do that together and we know the spots. So we'll check it out and bring back a report.
I also think with the installation of the newer fancy bike racks, as we get those installed, maybe more bicyclists will use those options, but probably not because they want to be drinking coffee at the roastery. So with that, I think this was just accept the report and thank you, everyone. And with that, we will move on to council member reports, which we all have an agreement, we're keeping these short. So I'll ask David to go first.
Sure, the MCC MC dinner, the excellent housing element workshop that was held here. And one last thing, riffing off of what Jody brought to us, I don't know if anybody has noticed, this is not a report, but an observation for particularly our seniors because Jody tells me that she is hearing that some seniors are falling prey to this and I actually got four of them today by somebody robo-ing that they're the IRS and Helen Handbasket is coming down on me for if I don't do all sorts of things like giving them money and making fun and all of this. To our seniors out there, please understand that whatever you think about the IRS, they do not call you up, they do not harass you. If they have a question, they will send you a letter. Please do not fall prey to this and even more importantly, if you have any questions, please take a look on the town website. On the bottom right-hand side, we have a hot link to senior services. Call one of those numbers, reach out and I'm sure that they will confirm this, hopefully settle your fears and, but most importantly, take no action whatsoever if you get one of these extraordinarily unethical and cruel hoaxes that folks are trying to portray on our seniors.
Thank you, David. John?
Okay, I guess the same goes for the Nigerian. Who else? Okay, I went to a meeting with a number of people about the Sky Ranch thing where the, basically that's moving forward in terms of becoming open space, public access will probably be later on towards the summer or perhaps later, it kind of depends on how fast it goes. A lot of work is being done behind the scenes to try to facilitate the horse ranch still being there in one form or another and it still remains to be seen whether all the parts come together on that. Let me see, I also attended the open space tax assessment district workshop in this room, which is very interesting. I think Mayor Kohler was there earlier than I was, but it basically looks to the adjacent homes that would mostly be the beneficiaries of having some place such as the Wal property as one example. There's immediate adjacent homes that are very interested in preserving public access to that because they're the ones that often use it and, you know, what we learned was that very often people are willing to tax themselves at a kind of custom-made tax assessment district, it's not a town-wide sort of thing. And that strategy has had some success in the past and so that's one of the things that we learned at that meeting. The joint housing workshop in here I also attended. I went to a transportation authority meeting. Flood Zone Nine ran a meeting out in kind of a public forum about Lefty Gomez and Loma Alta retention basins were the primary subject matter there and that's moving, they're learning more of the things that they need to know in terms of preliminary engineering and research and the next Flood Zone Nine meeting, I believe, is San Anselmo Chambers next Monday. Is that right?
February seventeenth and nineteenth.
I guess that's a week from now. Yeah, couple of weeks from now. Immediately after, I also attended an open space meeting and Safe Roots Schools, it's a subcommittee of the Transportation Authority where basically we're finding a little bit of money to try to keep the crossing guard program from shrinking too much and also keep the Safe Roots program going. And MCC MC, that's it.
Thank you. So Renee?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't really like feeling too rushed in these and not because I want to sit here and go on and on about what I've done, but more because I think it's really important that people understand that when we go to these meetings, we're representing the town of Fairfax. We've been chosen or appointed by our fellow council members and many of the things that we do would be of great interest. It's just very hard to keep everyone interested, but I do think there are people listening at home and it allows people to know what kind of questions to ask and where we are out in the larger community. So I'm sorry to take an extra minute.
You agreed on three minutes, let's move forward.
Oh, dear.
Or four minutes.
Okay, so I'm gonna just do this really fast, maybe. Okay, so the Safe Roots to Schools Task Force meeting, we meet just four times a year, talking about grants and the completion of the bicycle spine, which needs a grant, which has been applied for in order to complete. I attended the Marin organizing committee's action to announce that the REST program, which you will remember we agreed and voted to fund, the only city in the county who did that in full support of the rotating emergency shelter, has shown an incredible amount of flexibility in now working toward moving their vision and their action towards supporting the countywide plan, which is a ten-year plan called Home for All to address a much broader issue, the issue of homelessness and all of the wraparound services that are required to deal with this problem in an effective way. So supporting REST has been a great pleasure and I think I can speak so for the rest of the council. They will be piloting a summer project in San Anselmo at St. Anselms, which will be a permanent space for them through the summer in order to study the need and test the waters around permanent sheltering. I attended the Housing Element Workshop, which David alluded to, several tree committee meetings, the second interview appointment process of Mr. Peter Lacks and thank you again to Bruce Ackerman for stepping up and being such a strong candidate. The point in time homeless count took place last week and that is a HUD mandated study and count of each and every single homeless person. It is done in the last two weeks of January every two years. So I went out at 5:30 in the morning, I looked in our area, so mostly in San Anselmo within a census boundary. I am happy to report that I found two homeless individuals in the period of time that we looked, which means that people are not, as we know, receiving services here, so they are going to where the services are, which to me, that speaks even more so to the need to participate on some level with a countywide effort that is taking place, as I said. Went to the environmental forum, conducted two lecture series workshops on water in the state of the drought in Marin County. I'm participating in the RX Safe Marin Task Force, which has now created a working committee to look at the extended producer responsibility of the pharmaceutical companies in the safe disposal at the end of life of our pharmaceuticals. This is something which you will find all over town. Please take one from the library. It actually features our Sergeant O'Callahan and what Fairfax is doing to deal with an endemic and epidemic problem. It is now known that more people die in Marin County of overdoses than they do of breast cancer. So this is a growing problem and the money needs to come from somewhere to fund safe disposal. I'm almost there, Barbara. The Ross Valley Healthy Communities Collaborative is just on fire and we will be meeting with the police chiefs from Central Marin Police Authority and from Fairfax on the eleventh at the White Hill School Library. If you would like to come, ask questions, what are the police doing, how are we dealing with our youth on the streets and how are we dealing with this drug situation with, from the perspective of law enforcement? And this morning was a zero waste task force meeting and a lot of energy around looking at the true, what is, what is zero waste and moving quickly toward our goal in Fairfax, which is 2020. Okay, that was way too long, but thank you.
That was great, thank you. And I think Peter, you probably have one item to report next month, you'll probably have more. You attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members?
Yes, I did and that was quite a surprise. It was great to meet colleagues within minutes of being sworn in from around the county, other jurisdictions. I also did attend the open space workshop. I found that very encouraging, seeing all the creative ways of funding open space was particularly intrigued, like John with the Mellow Roos District as a possibility. Also attended the housing workshop in early December and it was good to get an overview and hear the discussion about meeting the arena numbers and seeing, for me, it was very helpful as a sort of a little process for getting an update on the status of those things. So that's, that's what I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll be quick. I also attended the Fairfax Open Space and San Anselmo Open Space Joint Tax Assessment Districts, which Peter and John attended, which Marin Open Space Trust provided a presentation on how to do that. I also attended the Marin Organizing Committee REST Call to Action on January 21st, which Renee spoke about, which is a wonderful project and I'm proud to say, but sad to say, that we are still the only city who has stepped up to support that financially, but hopefully now with this change, maybe more will. I attended a board meeting for the Community Media Center of Marin and as you know, CMCN televises our meetings and one of our representatives, Damian, is here tonight filming us. I also attended the special, hello Damian, also attended the special town council meeting wherein we appointed our new council member, Peter Lacks, welcome. I attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Meeting, which the rest of us did as well, and the featured speaker was the Executive Director of the Marin Community Foundation, so we need to find out more how to access those grants. And also attended the countywide public disaster and emergency preparedness meeting just Monday and Cindy Swift also has been participating in those meetings. Thank you, Cindy. The Sky Ranch meeting, talking more about moving forward with Sky Ranch, the Housing Element Workshop and the Flood Zone Nine meeting on Lefty Gomez Field and Loma Alta. And I just want to mention something that Lefty Gomez, his daughter lives in Canyon Village in Fairfax and I knew her, his grandson quite well. So, you know, a local, I never actually knew there was a Lefty Gomez, but apparently he was an incredible baseball player. I know, David, don't give me that look.
He was the star for the Yankees in the twenties and thirties. Did not know that.
Well, his daughter lives in Canyon Village.
Looking at the Yankees rotation this year, tell them to get a mitt and head back to the Bronx, they could use him.
Anyway, so good to know, I'm sorry, I'm so ignorant. And with that, we should move on to the Town Managers Report and I'm gonna ask, after the Town Managers Report, if we can take a five-minute break. Thank you, Garrett, if you, you're on.
Okay, so last meeting, the council asked for some updates on projects, one of which was Pavilion Seismic Retrofit Project. Did a little research and it looks like the town applied to FEMA back in 2008 for the seismic retrofit ADA improvement grant. It was awarded in 2010, $450,000 with a 25% match. Condition of the grant was that the town had to update its hazard mitigation plan, of which the town did in 2012. Now, in 2012, 2013, FEMA had to decide whether or not it wanted, gets a little technical, whether they wanted a memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding. What those do is they dictate procedures you have to follow related to archaeological and cultural resources, how to handle it. So FEMA decided that they wanted a memorandum of agreement, which is much more complicated, but it took them a while to figure that out. We actually prepared one, they never responded because that's not really, I guess, the process. But anyway, in 2013, let's see, they decided, where are we now, we're moving forward, 2013? Ah, yes, 2014, moving 2014. FEMA, they actually started conducting their studies and they did their historical assessment and how that works is they do that and then they send a letter or the report to the state historic preservation officer. And so where it's now for all 2014 is FEMA and SHPO have been going back and forth over details. Interestingly enough, they both agree on the concept. The building's not historic, but the area has a potential impact and it's historic. But what they can agree on are the different specifics. So they're going back and forth. Where it is now is staff, we actually had our architect answer some questions for SHPO. We gave that information to FEMA, they're incorporating into their latest report and my understanding is it's just waiting for a signature and then they're gonna send that to SHPO and we're hoping that SHPO finally says okay. Now, when everybody says everything's okay, then you're looking at maybe another six to 12 months in order to get a memorandum of agreement approved because that needs to be prepared and then reviewed and signed off by the tribe.
How long has the information been with FEMA so they need to send that on to SHPO? How long has it been sitting with FEMA?
Uh, let's see, we sent it a few weeks ago when we asked, hey, would it be helpful if we gave you some information?
Oh, so not very long.
So not very long. So it sounds like my last discussion with them was that they are ready to send a letter, but it needs to be signed off on and then it goes to SHPO and then we see what happens. But, long story short, once that's all done, you're probably looking at another six to 12 months for the ammo, for the memorandum. for the MOA, for the memorandum of agreement to be approved. Once that's signed off with, then we actually can begin the project.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask for a little bit of clarification? One of the reasons why I brought this up at one point in the past was I understood that there was a point in time at which that Pavilion Project, depending on the outcome of this, obviously, and I guess it's good that they're agreeing that the building itself is not sacrosanct necessarily, though I would feel it's somewhat that way, but just the land underneath of it. And so one of the objectives that I would like to see is to have some more community space underneath of that pavilion, if it were raised up as part of the earthquake retrofit. And the answer that I received back about a year, year and a half ago, was that there was a point in time after, and I believe it was after this memorandum of understanding, or the MOA, I've already forgotten what the acronym means, at the point after which that is signed, is that when that window opens, where we can say, well, we want some community classroom kind of stuff, or perhaps different facilities for the town or the community.
You can explore that. Preliminary findings from the architect, because I believe that was asked of them, is that it's very problematic, just because you would have to redo the foundation to create that space, and actually it'd just be more effective to either add space to the back of the building. But that being said, we can do, explore all those options when the memorandum of agreement's in place, because then we're allowed to spend money and actually get reimbursed.
That's always good. And so we're looking at about a year to 18 months.
Best case is six months.
Yeah, best case, yeah, I wasn't holding my breath on FEMA moving faster than expected or anything, but, you know, okay, thank you.
When FEMA sends a letter to SHPO, will we get a copy of it, so we'll know when it went to SHPO?
Sure, I, if you, well, if you like, I could send you a copy of all the letters.
No, I just think, once that happens, so we make sure that it isn't sitting too long up there, so we can move this along.
Yeah, I think this point, we're really monitoring it pretty closely, but it's an odd thing between the two agencies.
Okay, thank you. So then you want to move on to the bridge projects, a quick update?
Quick update.
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter, I didn't see you.
Thanks, I'm a little new to this. Just a couple of quick questions. SHPO is at the California Historical?
Sorry, it's the State Historic Preservation Officer.
Okay, and then the MOA would be between the town of Fairfax and FEMA?
MOA, I believe, is between the tribe, Great Indian Tribe, the town, and I believe FEMA, or Cal, no, it'd be FEMA.
And does that have to do with Indian artifacts and burial sites?
Yeah, it has to do with everything, how you handle it, if you find it, mitigation measures, all the procedures. It lays out really specifically how everything is treated and where it goes to when it's found.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Sorry, I didn't see you. Bridge projects, quick update?
We'll have a more detailed report on the bridge project on your March meeting. Basically, the town has five bridges funded with federal funding. Three, Spruce, Marin, and Canyon, those are all maintenance projects. We're in preliminary design, and now we're doing the studies required for all the environmental related for federal and state laws. That's where I am right now. Creek, Creek Road Bridge is actually a seismic retrofit bridge plus maintenance. Again, we're in preliminary design, we're doing the studies for environmental clearance, that's where we're at now. And actually, the Metalway Bridge is, we're not even there. We're in the assessment phase, we actually ran out of money, and we applied, we were asking for approval from Caltrans for more funding, so we can complete all the necessary studies. But we will report back to the council exactly where we're at and what Caltrans has said related to the Metalway Bridge and other bridges at the March meeting.
Okay, and then you were going to talk about the community engagement plan, briefly?
So briefly on that, one of the goals for the council that you approved for staff in the budget was developing a community engagement plan. We could talk more about the actual software online engagement program that we're proposing to use for the residential, get comments on the residential parking system. But in essence, it allows the community to engage and answer questions online. It allows Peak Democracy, the software we're using, they actually monitor it for civil and legal requirements. And also, the best part about it is they make sure responses are in a manner to which staff doesn't get overwhelmed and the public doesn't get frustrated that they're not receiving responses. So that's what we're doing. In terms of the other engagement strategies, we're looking at Constant Contact, so people can sign up online, receive the newsletter, which we're starting to try to put out on a monthly, but maybe it'll be more of a every two months or maybe a quarterly basis. We're also looking at doing some other things to get information out there, so that the public is enabled to communicate more on the different issues when they can't make it to the meetings.
Just a suggestion, to save money, MailChimp, you can send out up to 2,000 for free. And it works, it's less unwieldy than Constant Contact, which will cost, I think, on the order of about 6,000 to 1,000 or more a year. So we could actually use MailChimp instead.
Okay, we'll look at that. Right now, Constant Contact's only costing us like $10 a month.
Oh, okay, well, then that's pretty inexpensive, no need to change, okay.
Garrett, can I just ask for clarification on Peak Democracy? And I know we will go into it more later, but when I was reading your report as relates to the parking, the managed residential parking and using Peak Democracy that way, is Peak Democracy employed just for one particular, one specific item? Or is it for a month's agenda of items? Or how does it work? Does it specify just one issue, and then we can receive feedback? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes, actually, you can have categories. You could have multiple processes going on at the same time for feedback. Right now, the county uses it in Nevada, but a lot of different towns. So it's really driven more by the ability of staff to write up the different items to put it on there for feedback. But there's no restriction, you could have hundreds of items. Not that I'm advocating that. Nor do more cities do hundreds, but someone like Fremont will have maybe 20 different items with subsets going on at the same time.
Okay, and all the while, we're collecting addresses, email addresses for people, so we can continue to send out the newsletter?
Yes, that would be all part of the process and one of the main things for Constant Contact, to start building our database.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so any other questions of the manager? Otherwise, we could take a five-minute break. Okay, five minutes. We're going to do our first public hearing, which is on our ordnance, introduction and first reading by title only of Ordinance 785 and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax amending Chapter 17.064 Signs of the Town Code. And Garrett, do you want to give a staff report? Thank you.
Thank you. Recommendation, I'd advise you conduct your public hearing, and then you introduce and waive the first reading and read the title only, Ordinance Number 785. So you may recall, this item was continued from your January 14th meeting. This was to allow staff time in order to take a look at comments and suggestions made by Councilmember Weinsdorf, and then create the necessary ordinance and red line for council review. As background, it was back in August of last year, the council actually discussed the need to revise the sign ordinance. At that time, there was a provision that said political signs cannot be up for more than 30 days. What the council, and that existing code was last amended in 1989. What the council decided at that time, and the comment was, well, 30 days, that really doesn't allow enough time for the campaigning window, especially given absentee ballots and mail-in ballots. Staff was directed to go ahead and revise the sign ordinance. We did do that, and working with the Planning Commission, what we did was, we determined that, and we actually reported this to the council, that you can't have a separate designation for political signs, as that would be illegal. So what we did was, we created a new category called temporary non-commercial signs that would be all encompassing of those type of signs. So in terms of going to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did review it, made some changes, and created those categories. And perhaps the best way, and that was in December, and perhaps as a matter of clarification, because what you'll see is, we have several versions within the staff report. And perhaps the best way to do it is, what we're recommending is that the council actually approve the ordinance that we're referring to, Councilmember Weinsdorf proposed version, Ordinance of 785. What that does is, it actually incorporates those comments of Councilmember Weinsdorf's as well as the Planning Commission's in the ordinance. And perhaps what I can do to make it a little more clear is, I'll walk through Ordinance 785 and sort of point out what was added. And that way, it's a little more clear to the council and to the community what exactly was done. Specifically, in Ordinance 758, what it does, it, Councilman Weinsdorf's?
758 or 785?
785, sorry, 785. He had a provision regarding light pollution. That would be a criteria when it comes to if a sign is actually lit. That required a definition, that's in this ordinance. Councilmember Weinsdorf suggested that we create categories under signs permitted without sign permit, just for clarification. So we have a category called commercial signs, and we have a category called temporary non-commercial signs. Now, the Planning Commission did recommend keeping, under temporary non-commercial signs, they could be as big as 24 by 48 inches. Councilmember Weinsdorf suggested a smaller size, perhaps 36 inches. That's what this ordinance has. Any sign has to be less than 24 by 36 inches. Another provision was that, this was approved by the PC, is that we added language in a section just to clarify where non-commercial signs could be located. Non-commercial signs could be located in the same locations as commercial signs. And then, under design criteria, to provide a little clarification, we added, made it clear what's design criteria that applies to permanent signs and design criteria that provides temporary non-commercial signs. And in these provisions, where Councilmember Weinsdorf suggested making light pollution criteria, so if lighting is installed, it should not cause glare or passing pedestrians or most cause glare to passing pedestrians or motorists, or cause light pollution. That was a clause added. Just as caveat, for the Planning Commission, they just modified the lighting provision that was actually in the existing ordinance and code. They just wanted to clarify, to say that lighting's not required, it's just if it is installed, then these provisions will apply. But with that, staff was recommending that you approve, again, this version of the ordinance with those provisions added, both by, approved by the, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, as well as the incorporated Councilmember Weinsdorf's comments. So with that, that concludes the staff report.
So questions of the council for staff before we open the public hearing?
I guess in regards to the lighting, I mean, issue, I guess, under 17064140 Design Criteria, Section F, or 1F, I guess it would be, where it says if lighting is installed, should not cause glare to passing pedestrians or motorists. I, I think that part of light pollution is basically, it's, you know, it's going off up and out, and then basically you can see it glaring, you know, it's lighting up the sky, it's lighting up, you know, people are looking down out of their windows and having light glare into it. We've got enough, you know, an issue like that over in White Hill School. So maybe adding the language, and focus downward away from the sky, or, you know, in a downward direction?
So the light?
After it should not cause glare to passing pedestrians and motorists, and focus downward. I mean, I don't know if you need to list all the beneficiaries of it, but there's a number of them. There's adjacent residences, there's wildlife, there's, we heard a report last month and year of, you know, a lot of bird life getting thrown off.
So under the definition of light pollution, it says light falling where it's not intended, wanted, or needed. So would that address what your, what your concerns are? As opposed to trying to address it, because I don't know how lighting can be on a sign. Sometimes it's uplighting, downlighting, but?
Which section are you referring to?
In the beginning, in Section 1 of the ordinance, it has a definition for light pollution?
Garrett, if you look at Section 1.
Yep.
And the version?
Section 102.
So keep going, pass the Planning Commission's, that one.
Yeah, so you're talking about this section here?
It's just the definition.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty broad definition. I guess it's really, when it's that broad, it really comes down to how it's interpreted. So, you know, it wouldn't hurt for more clarification, in my opinion, but, you know, where you would put that in? I guess, yeah, light trespass, it would certainly fall under this definition, so. I'd have to give it a little bit more thought here to figure out a good spot. But, you know, maybe that, it really depends on how it's interpreted, you know, whether it's up angle or down angle or whatever.
Yeah, I think from staff's perspective, it'd be good not to have a vision saying which direction the light has to go. I think we understand that it needs to stay for its intended purpose and not cause light pollution as designed to the neighbors or community.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that sounds good. I mean, I think the intention should be more than just pedestrians and motorists, is what I'm thinking.
So what we can do is maybe, as we go through this process, you can look and see if you would want to change some language to that, and we can bring that back. So other members of the council want to speak on this? Peter?
I had some wordsmithing changes to suggest. I don't know if this is a timer, if we should, if it comes back to us.
Sorry, we could, or we could wait till after the public hearing?
Well, I have very, very brief changes.
Okay, let's go ahead.
And I think it'll, I think the definition of light pollution, red with the other sections, would address your concerns, John. But the definition of light pollution, I'd make a couple of suggestions. It says excessive and inappropriate artificial light. I think, I would, I would suggest striking and inappropriate, because I think inappropriate is a little too vague, and it's a little bit of like legislating taste. And I think it's a more cleaner ordinance if it doesn't have that sort of subjective element. And then the other thing, too, along with that, is I would eliminate the section that discusses clutter, because again, that gets into the realm of judgment. And bright, confusing, and excessive groupings of light sources, that gets into an aesthetic choice, and one person's clutter might be another person's, you know, pizzazz. So I think to have a clearer ordinance, I would suggest striking that. And then one last change would be glare, talking about glare. And in parentheses, it says excessive brightness which causes visual discomfort and can decrease visibility. I would change that "and" to read "or", so that glare is either excessive brightness to cause visual discomfort or something that decreases visibility. I think that makes it a more inclusive definition of light pollution, rather than having it have to be both criteria. So those would be my suggestions to clarify the definition of light pollution.
Other members of the council? I have something, or just a couple of things, I think. So the version we're looking at is the version that says Councilmember Weinsdorf's, and I think from what we discussed prior, that this is actually Councilmember Weinsdorf incorporated with the Planning Commission, so we would know what we were actually moving forward with. And I think because there was a lot of, there's a word in here under Section 5 that said building officer, or number 5, supposed to be building official. And I'm not sure, I think at some point, I'd And I'm not sure, I think at some point, I'd like to have a discussion of why we went from twenty-four to thirty-six inches. What is the magic number there? Maybe I'll ask David. But I do want to say, I think that Peter's suggestions for the changes in this add clarity and less kind of subjectivity. And were we to enforce this, I think we would be more able to enforce it with those changes. So I think those are good. Just a note, when, when we do move forward, there's a lot of extra punctuation in here that, there's quotes, where I think they're not supposed to be in there, but anyway, we can fix that after the fact. So just a question for you, David. Where did twenty-four by thirty-six came from?
My closet. I pulled out the largest political sign that I used over the last couple of elections and measured it, and that's what it was.
All right. I do know that there are larger signs that are used in some areas, but...
Precisely, then, we, I want to, first of all, I want to give a, a lot of applause to Janet's colleague Amanda, who worked on this really well, and quite diligently. And, and we spoke about this, and the fact that, I think everybody knows, you, you head down Second Street on the way to one oh one in campaign season, and Representative Huffman has an enormous sign there on the right-hand side. You head over to Nevada, and there's an entire hillside cluttered with that crap. The last thing I think any of us want to see in Fairfax is any of our names at that size on somebody's lawn. So we, one of the things that Amanda was quite persuasive about when we were working on this, was the need to be respectful of the First Amendment, but at the same time, it seemed quite reasonable to she and I that this number was respectful, both of the need for political expression, but also to avoid clutter, if you will, on, on all of our streets and roads. So that's where the number came from.
Okay, thank you. So, other questions of the council, because we can open up the public hearing?
Can I just say one other thing?
Yes.
You know, we were chatting many hours ago about the vote for young people. This light pollution idea didn't spring out of my head. Couple of years ago, we had a Drake kid who came in here and actually sat down with Jim Moore, myself, Lyndon Neal, and she was the one who brought the concept of light pollution. So it's always been sitting around, in, in my mind, as something that was unfinished business. And when this ordinance got opened up, I looked at it and said, ah, this would, it's not the only place, but it's one place in which we could immediately inject her thought and her consideration, which I thought at that time was, was quite thoughtful. So I want to give credit where credit is due.
Okay, thank you. So with that, let's open up the public comment, or the public hearing. Members of the public want to speak on this matter? Frank?
Just quickly, Mayor, I believe Fairfax, the previous code said eight square feet was allowable for political signs? And is it, it's now going down to six square feet?
Twenty-four by forty-eight.
It was twenty-four by forty-eight.
So now it's twenty-four by thirty-six.
Right, so you're reducing it from eight, eight square feet to six square feet. You know, it works fine for Fairfax, but, but there's, there's countywide, state, and federal elections, and most of those signs are a little larger than two feet by three feet.
They can get with the program.
Excuse me?
They can get with the program. They can get with Fairfax. They can, they can, they can reduce the extent of their sign pollution by making it smaller.
I don't think they're gonna...
It's tough to ask an Assembly candidate or a Senate candidate to reduce their, their sign size when, when, when it's kind of a standard size.
It's a printing run that goes.
But anyway, so it's a reduction in size. Are you adding a number of days allowable for a sign to be up?
So, what we've done is we've changed the time to sixty-seven days. Before, you had thirty days and seven days to take it down. Now it's sixty-seven days, so it gives you sixty days, so we get the absentee ballots?
Sure, that's good, yeah. I want to reduce the, the size. I mean, it's great for Fairfax elections, but we're just a small part of what's going on statewide. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Other members of the public want to weigh in on the hearing? I think, all right, so seeing none, I'd like to bring it back to the council. I would also say, the danger of, we will never have the size signs that you see along going to Highway one oh one or up in Nevada, where they make those very large signs. And I do, I really, the change in size really did give me pause, because there are folks who want to do these very large signs that we, that still wouldn't fit within the twenty-four by forty-eight. They would still be too big for our area. But I think we rarely see very large signs, and I also know when the MIRA campaign was going on, their signs were larger, and they wouldn't have worked. And I know this council voted to support those. So I would, although I, I hear you, David, and I appreciate that concern, I think I would say, I would prefer staying with the twenty-four by forty-eight, which would capture a little bit larger sign, but, in, in those rare instances, but it would not allow those very big signs.
Well, is it worded such that we can say we cap it at that? Is that how it's worded? I don't, I'm not looking at exactly where it is.
Yeah, it says, it says when not over twenty-four by thirty-six, and it was twenty-four by forty-eight. So that means... It can't be any bigger than that. So we wouldn't allow those huge signs, but we would still be able to capture some of these, you know, more countywide things like MIRA, where they did have bigger signs.
They would need a sign permit. That's, if they wanted to exceed the size limit, they would have to get a permit.
Well, I think in the case of something like MIRA, we wouldn't want to ask them to get a sign permit. But where, for example, Congressman Huffman wanted to put a huge sign up, I think it makes sense to ask for a permit. But the twenty-four by forty-eight would allow a little bit of flexibility for those countywide type things, and I, I don't think we would see a lot of them. So I, I hear you, David, and...
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a, you know, it's not a line in the sand by any stretch of the imagination.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it does a disservice, because frankly, somebody running for Assembly or President, or, you know, there are presidential elections from time to time, and they print them all in one big printing press, or several.
Well, actually, I would, I'm going to differ with you, John, only in that Mark Levine puts a big sign down in San Rafael, and he has little signs for the smaller jurisdictions.
Yeah, but I mean, if there is a...
The bigger the election, they have the money to do whatever it is that they need to do. But the smaller ones, I agree with you, Barbara, very much. We, we don't want to penalize something like MIRA for coming in and wanting to put their signs up. It makes it too complicated.
My point was just, if there's a de facto standard that most people tend to fit inside of, let's go with the flow, instead of trying to strike out our...
I think David has said he's okay with reverting back, and so, any other comments of the council? Peter?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on that, too. I think it allows more flexibility. I just kind of laid out my papers and what would be a two-by-three foot area. And it is a little, it's small, I think some signs could come in a little bit bigger, and it would just be really problematic if, you know, there was an MEA type of measure that, you know, then three hundred people in Fairfax would have to apply for permits to put those signs up in their yard. So I, I agree, we should keep it the size as is.
One point of clarification, it wouldn't be the three hundred people, it would be the person who was campaigning, correct, who would have to get the permit? If we went, if it, the huge, it would...
Whoever wanted to get the permit, doesn't have to necessarily be the person campaigning. Could be anyone.
Wouldn't you need that permit, though, to put one of those signs in your yard?
If it exceeded the limits, yes.
Yeah, so then, if there's three hundred people that want to, you know, put up a sign for some measure, that have to get a permit or something, it would...
Okay, so I think we're staying with the twenty-four by forty-eight, which allows flexibility, but doesn't allow the huge signs to come in. So we're not, I think that works. It's not a perfect fit, but I think that allows us flexibility. So, it sounds like there's some wordsmithing changes. David, how do you feel about the wordsmithing changes that Peter made to the light pollution?
Yeah, Peter and I had the chance to talk about it earlier this week. I thought they were excellent recommendations, and I look forward to seeing a final draft.
Okay. And let me ask, John, I, I think Peter's changes really gets to the clarity that I think you were looking for without being too...
Yeah, I think it does. I mean, I, I think there's a danger in trying to wordsmith it for one particular idea, but basically to, in effect, what we're giving is guidelines to, to give, you know, staff the ability to do it in the right way. I think it is important to note, you know, that, I mean, I, I guess it's not in the ordinance, it's more in the definition at the front of the planning commission one, where that other definition was. If you look at the very last document that's color-coded, it's really easy to see... Yeah. Yeah, and I guess, yeah, the reasons why are really what should drive the actions, and, you know, keeping light where it's supposed to be and not going in people's windows, not going up into the trees and stuff. You know, it's more of an issue with, you know, streetlights and stuff like that, but it's an issue with anything. You know, somebody with a motion-activated light on the outside of their garage, and every time somebody walks their dog by it, you know, it's blasting three hundred watts out through somebody's windows. I mean, I've, I've seen this in several places in my neighborhood, and, you know, it's light pollution also, and I, you know, it's, it's kind of irresponsible way to handle it.
Well, it sounds like this may be something in the future, as we look at other parts of the code, we may integrate this light pollution in. So thank you, David, for bringing that forward. So I would suggest that just, so, we're clear on what the light pollution definition is maybe, I'll just read it as my notes from what Peter said. It would say excessive artificial light that includes light trespass, parentheses, light falling where it is not intended, wanted, or needed, and parentheses, comma, and, well, no comma, and glare, parentheses, excessive brightness which causes visual discomfort or can decrease visibility, and parentheses, period. Is that correct?
Yes, and one, one other thing, though, there would be no and between, preceding glare.
Why, you're saying includes light trespass and glare?
Yeah, there, light trespass and glare are two things that, in the alternative, that are not allowed.
So light trespass or glare?
Yeah, or just leaving it as is with that comma. There, there's no need to insert the word and before glare.
Well, it's grammatically not correct if you just have a comma, so I think or glare works.
Okay, then I would add, recommend or glare, so that it's...
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then, under number five on, I guess, page two, change building officer to building official, and then B on that, page eight B, would be, the signs would be when not over twenty-four by forty-eight inches. And I think those were all the changes that we discussed up here. Okay, so with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll move that we, to introduce and waive first reading, read by title only, ordinance number seven eight five, an ordinance of the town of the Town Council of Fairfax, amending chapter seventeen point oh six four signs.
With the changes?
With the changes recommended by all council members.
Thank you, and second?
I'll second.
So, motion, Weinsdorf, second read, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we are moving on to Agenda Item Twelve, and this is the introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance seven eighty-seven. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending chapter seventeen point zero four oh, general zone regulations, adding sections several, and deleting Article Two of Chapter seventeen point one hundred CC Central Commercial of the Fairfax Town, Town Code relating to formula businesses and restaurants. Garrett, would you like to give the staff report, please?
Thank you. Again, we're recommending you conduct the public hearing, and then you introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance seven eight seven. Similar to the sign ordinance, again, this item was scheduled for January fourteenth. We recommend it be continued to the meeting this evening, to allow staff some time to review the revisions and prepare a red line based on Mayor Kohler's comments. As background, back in August two thousand fourteen, you may recall the council actually adopted a moratorium on basically formula-based businesses in the highway commercial zone. That was because there wasn't a provision governing formula-based businesses in that zone. In September two thousand fourteen, you extended that moratorium for a period of total of one year, or when regulations governing formula-based businesses would be adopted. So if this were to be introduced, and then the second reading adopted, thirty days later, what would happen is, it would take effect, and then this moratorium would actually expire. So perhaps the planning commission did actually take a look at the business formula ordinance back in September two thousand fourteen. They had some changes, added some whereas's. We brought it back to the planning commission in October two thousand fourteen. They had some additional changes, but their main comment was that they believed that it would be more appropriate, rather than just keeping the formula-based standards in the CC Central Commercial Zone, or CH Highway Commercial Zone, that it'd be appropriate for it to apply to all the commercial zones townwide. Staff agreed that was a better way to take a look at it. So what we did was, we made those revisions and came back to the planning commission in December. And what's happening now is this ordinance actually applies to all commercial zones, which does include the PDD zone, but it does not include the commercial recreation zone, because that was adopted by vote, and you can only amend that by vote. So it's all the commercial zones except CR. And so, what we have before you is that formula-based business ordinance. We did attach various red lines and comparisons. I think that also might have gotten a little confusing. So what I'm going to do is point out which one, if you were to adopt changes, that what, what you're actually, what you would actually be adopting. So what we did is staff upon discussions with, with the mayor, if you go to what we would call the proposed ordinance seven eight seven, attach your staff report that says with planning commission revisions and Mayor Kohler's revisions. We created that, we show it as a red line, but actually, that would be the ordinance you'd be adopting with some changes. And what we're actually recommending in further discussions with Mayor Kohler, if you go to that ordinance, and it's actually the last attachment to the, the staff report, and you'll see that in it, there's, if you go to the bottom of the page, there's a whereas. And in the whereas, initially, we had struck a line that said, and are not necessarily reproducible or found in the context of formula businesses and restaurants. What we're proposing is that we add that strikeout back in. So that would be in that whereas, and then...
That's line thirty-one and thirty-two?
Right, line thirty-one, thirty-two. And you could see line thirty-three and thirty-four and thirty-five, we added a whereas. The whereas, as a well-balanced mix of commercial and retail offerings in town contributes to a diverse and local, and healthy local economy and business environment for the benefit of towns as a whole, protects against blight, and, so that was added. And then, what we also added, you will see, if you go to page three of the ordinance under C, you could see to that requirement, under the standards, that we added a line that, and will not have, and will not have significant adverse financial impacts to same or similar businesses within that zone. So that's actually a combination of what the planning commission and Mayor Kohler is recommending. Staff believes these provisions are, work well for the ordinance, and we're actually recommending that after the public hearing, consider comments, and then that we, recommending that the council adopt the ordinance seven seven.
Wasn't there one... Wasn't there one other change that we talked about on line ninety-seven? To what you see there is instead of given, say, considering-
Oh, sorry, I did miss that. You're correct, sorry about that. I did miss in the same C, you're correct, line ninety-seven, it says, given the existence, and we recommend changing that to considering the existence. Sorry, I missed that.
So, it would say, given the, considering the existence of in proximity to the same or similar businesses within that zone, and then the new text. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I recommend on line ninety-eight that we get rid of the comma after significant because the wording is will not have significant adverse financial impacts.
Good point.
That's the phrase.
Other members of the council? Well, we can open the public hearing at this time and bring it back to the council after the public hearing, so would members of the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council. David?
Happy to make a motion if it's appropriate.
I think it is appropriate.
Then I would introduce and waive first reading and read by title only, ordinance number seven eighty-seven, an ordinance of the town council, town of Fairfax, amending chapter 17.040, general zone regulations and adding sections, I'll read them all off because we probably should, 17.092.130, 17.096.140, 17.100.130, 17.104.120, 17.108.080, and 17.112.030, and deleting article two of chapter 17.100 CC central commercial zone of Fairfax town code relating to formula businesses and restaurants.
And with the changes?
With the changes, all recommended by council members.
Okay.
I will second.
Second, motion, Winesoff, second, Goddard? I'm sorry.
And with thanks for all of these, finding all of these changes.
And, thank you, and what am I calling for? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's not even that late. Okay. So, thank you, everyone. Moving on, I know someone has been sitting here waiting for this item. This is the discussion consideration of pilot residential parking. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we're moving on to thirteen. Discussion consideration of council's goal to implement disaster preparedness outreach and education programs, and there is someone waiting to speak on this as well. So, with that, Garrett, would you like to do the staff report?
Sure. You may recall at your January meeting, the council accepted a report on the activities the town undertook related to the storm on December eleventh. Early this evening, you did hear a brief presentation by the county, our fire department and the police department, public works activities related to the storm. Those presentations were meant to be background for this item, and this item really is providing the council an opportunity to really speak to one of its goals for 2014, which is implementing disaster preparedness outreach and education programs. From the staff perspective, this is a work in progress. We're trying to increase our information that we provided to the community via the newsletter. We do have a creek cam that allows people to monitor the creek underneath town hall during an event. We do have frequently asked questions out there to kind of explain what happens if you hear a siren and so on, but it is a work in progress. The town also has contracted with the conservation corps north bay to improve selected trails in town, something that the mayor and councilman Reed have been working on, and that we hope to create a map showing what those trails are in town for residents' use in emergency. And one of the things from the last meeting, council also expressed a desire to reconvene the disaster council. What we did in the staff report is we did attach a section of the code related to the disaster council, and we also attached the back of the past, I guess, participation and the role and agencies involved on the disaster council. And what we're actually saying at this point is we believe the actual participants will change, but not the agencies. We invite the same agencies. The mayor is a designated council rep, she's the chairperson of the disaster council. I'm the director of emergency services, police chief's the assistant director of emergency services, but the council can choose to have another council member participate if that's what they wanted. With that, it's also, the code lays out just different representatives that the council can appoint with, I guess I recommend in the council would just appoint based on that or change it. One of the things, we noticed there's a real estate firm. I would suggest that perhaps the chamber would replace that role and that, but there is no limitation to how many participants you can have. And so, with that, at this point, I think staff's direction is, we know we want to convene the disaster council, but we wanted to definitely get the council's feedback in how you see us moving forward.
Thank you, Garrett. Questions of staff from council members, Renee?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification in the piece, I guess there isn't a page, but under next council meeting, you talk about how the disaster council approved the town's current EOP that was dated 2006 and in 2010 determined that it was in compliance, and still to date in compliance. So, between 2006 and 2014, I'm just wondering how, what were the, how was that determined? And I can imagine many changes that I would think had taken place between those years.
Actually, there isn't really a whole lot of changes in terms of the ELC plan. What we did was every year or every few years, what we do is we have the town, there's a designated person in PD who's our emergency operations coordinator, and she takes a look at the document to make sure it's in compliance with industry standards for ELC plans. And in general, they haven't changed a whole lot. There may be a couple tweaks, but-
But, I'm sorry, so the difference between the EOP and the EOC, I understood that the EOP would be more our plan in Fairfax versus our operations center?
No, well, actually, I'm sorry. So, our emergency operations plan, that's the plan we use when we open our emergency operations center. That's the guiding principle for governing how you would typically handle an emergency type event and whether or not different roles within ELC. So, I kind of maybe use those interchangeably, but yes, it's the overall structure operational plan, and that hasn't really changed over time.
And things like MIRA, for instance, and the generations of MIRA that have happened since 2006, does it relate to that level of specificity?
No, what it would do is it would say something about communications between the different agencies and radios and so on, but it's not going to get to that level. I guess best way to start the plan, it's a guide for how you would structure your operations center, and it's a little different here. In other communities that are larger, you have enough staff and you have enough structure where you can have the different divisions, like you have planning, you have logistics, you have food and shelter, you have this whole list and roles. In Fairfax, you have really your police department, there's the fire next door and public works, and in essence, in an ELC event, everyone would be in the field except for some people like myself, and, you know, you'd have some liaisons with fire and PD and some other staff helping out. So, the plan itself is a pretty well-defined process of how it all works. Counties, you know, I've been through ELC training or EOP training for 40 hours with the county of Santa Clara, and it's all pretty structured. All the public agencies know pretty much how it works and how to operate in that type of environment. So, it's really more of an organizational plan than it is maybe specifically, if you're looking for a community outreach, it doesn't have that component to it.
But it is a document, correct?
That's correct.
And so, I'm wondering, where is that document available?
I don't, is it, it was online at one point, but-
I couldn't find it online.
Is it online?
I don't think it's online.
It's at the library.
A member of the public asked me for a copy of the plan, and she found a copy in the library.
Right.
And I had a copy in the office, but it was not online, is that correct?
It's not, I mean, can you put it, it's like this thick, and it's not going to mean anything to you, really.
I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at is this need for the public to know the plan. So, I understand this is apples and oranges, but I'm wondering, you know, that's sort of what I've been anxious for is, is a way that we can actually communicate to the public how this EOC works without having this much online. So, people understand the structures and what happens when there is an emergency. And then we plug in, you know, outreach and how the community should respond and what are the, you know?
I guess, maybe it'd be better if fire PD was here, but are you looking for something that says what you do in event of a fire or a flood or where you go or what you do, per se?
I understand this is part of a much larger conversation, but I do think, yes, that the time is ripe for us to really, really look at the what you do's and have a document that people can really count on. This is Fairfax's plan, and it addresses different levels.
So, that's part of the staff report is talking about, at the disaster council meeting, one topic of discussion could be community disaster preparedness, and then it goes on to suggest that a subcommittee of the disaster council could be formed to focus on this issue, which might be to prepare something that provides links to various things or a short brochure. There is a lot of information available, but the EOP is more where, and I've done this in huge organizations where you end up with a lot of people involved, in a sense, ours is so much simpler because you know who's on first. That plan, I don't think it would be a bad thing to have it online. I think we probably should at some point, but probably what's more important is just to show who's in charge of what during an incident or an event. And then, with that could be a community disaster kind of preparedness plan, and that's what I think Garrett's suggesting about trying to move forward. So, that's one of the reasons why I would like to institute the disaster council, so we can do the minimal work, but then really broaden out to have better community preparedness and what we do in town and how we help people kind of move forward. So, does that make sense to you? Okay, John, you had a comment?
Yeah, I have several comments, actually. I mean, I, well, I remember in my big example in my mind is the oh-five, oh-six flood, I guess technically it was all in oh-five, but some of the aftermath, including landslides, were in oh-six. And there was a huge upswelling of community service to each other, and basically people wanted to know how they could help do various things, and I, along with a number of other people, coordinated a lot of volunteer efforts, not saying to people, oh, go here and do this, you know, which has got some liability involved with it, but more like, oh, this is happening here and, you know, some, you know, a land has slid into the back of this house and, you know, some people are, you know, offering help, but this kind of needs to happen and this is what's going on. I sent out a bunch of emails, you know, sometimes a couple hours apart, sometimes, you know, four or five hours apart. And since that time, I've talked with people at Red Cross and the county for emergency response for things, and one reaction was kind of sobering that I got from somebody on the county level, it could have been Red Cross, who says, oh, well, you know, you didn't vet out every one of these volunteers. Well, we would have done that and it would be a three to four week process before we figured out who was qualified to do what and then assigned in the things. And he said, well, you know, by that time, it's over, you know? And Fairfax, she was saying, well, you're lucky you're a small community where people pretty much pull together because, you know, you'd get sued in a big city. But that's a lot of what Fairfax is about, is people helping each other. Recently, at a volunteer board, you know, the issue came up is that people wanted to know how they could help their neighbors and certain neighbors, you know, wanted to be able to help. Yeah, and here's the notes that David Winesoff is handing me here as the minutes from that particular meeting. And there's a very big need for that. I mean, there's a very big need also for the fire chief, the police chief, and for this top-level thing with the acronyms, the EOC and the EOP, you know, there's very good reasons for that to happen, especially, you know, in the situation with a fire or something like that. You want to have somebody with some authority saying, you know, don't go over here, that's where the fire is, and, you know, it's, you don't want to have it an anarchic situation any more than it already is just by the nature of the beast. However, there is a very big place for people just being aware of who in your neighborhood is elderly and may need help, who is a doctor or a nurse or is a contractor, has access to tools, I mean, various, various ways that we can pull together as a community and be more resilient. And I think that that kind of is a bottom-up approach, which needs to work in conjunction with the top-down approach, and they're both important. And it's really easy to get caught up in one approach or the other, and they need to be coordinated in a smart way.
Thank you, John. David?
Yeah, I'm very glad that John brought that up because I brought the minutes in anticipation of this conversation. I would like to turn it slightly a little bit to the side, but consistent with what we're talking about. I'm the representative from the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members to the county-wide disaster preparedness program. So, I report back to the collective fifty-five of us. One of the things that has been discussed is as much preparedness as you do, someday on an October afternoon, late afternoon, a fire of biblical proportions is going to sweep out of our western, cross our western boundary from all of the open space out there. And to one degree or another, we are going to be facing a nightmare that none of us want to even think about. And the question is going to be, where do we start and how do we begin the reconstruction of this? And I was, I raised this issue a little bit at what's called the DC Three, MCCMC event, and I received some information from the Red Cross, but for the most part, we spend a lot of our time on preparedness rather than recovery. And so, in my conversation, after Peter and I had got done with the important issues of light pollution, I asked him if he would join me, if it was the council's pleasure, to begin in a subcommittee to just very lightly start considering this and bring this conversation back to council and the community. Because, as the manager and I discussed it as well, as he pointed out, mostly in disaster situations, the recovery is attended to at that moment, but I pointed out, you could be missing a council member or two. All of us, you know, have jobs and family and pets and kids that we have to attend to, so in the middle of the crucible of misery, is that where we're going to be making our best decisions? Might, hopefully, never, but might some future council be benefited by having consideration of this matter, not under the gun, but with more time to reflect? So, this is a very long dissertation of way of saying that I would like the council's indulgence for Peter and I to begin just this light investigation of how communities get themselves ready in the event of a horrible natural disaster.
Just for clarification, get themselves ready for recovery in a-
Yes, yes.
So, as opposed to preparation? I get it.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to add, I represent the Marin County Council of Mayors and council members on the county-wide public disaster and emergency preparedness committee, which Cindy's been going with me. Cindy's been going with me. We meet monthly, and rather than quarterly, which the DC3 meets. There's a lot of rubber hits the road there, and there's a lot of, you know, boots-on-the-ground sort of experience. I also was an incident commander at California Environmental Protection Agency for emergencies, and during the 1989 quake, I led the Berkeley office to move forward. I agree that recovery is an issue, but I think we're also not at preparedness. And I think preparedness, I have no, I think it's great, if you guys want to explore this. I don't think we need a subcommittee. I think it's just like two council members working on things together, which happens all the time. But I really do think we, we want to focus a lot of efforts on preparedness, because I hate to see us being reactive. And I think what John did during the horrible flood, with his leadership skills, was able to make things happen, but I think we want more people able to make, you know, help themselves, help their neighbors. And so I think preparedness is going to be a big focus. So I would say, I'd like to see us give more direction after we open this up to public comment, but a couple of things I'd like to see us do is, on the back of this, it talks about who was on the Fairfax's disaster council. The good news is a lot of the titles, people are in those roles, but we have new people. We have a new librarian, we have a new police chief, we have a new fire chief. A number of those can be filled in. We have a new mayor. And in here, we had somebody from Marin County to be the emergency services coordinator, and I don't think that really works for Fairfax. I think we need to have the town manager, who's the emergency services coordinator. What is your title? What do we call you?
Beat Director of Emergency Services.
Right, okay, so I think, I'm not opposed to having somebody on the county, because I think that helps in a very large event, but I think what we ought to do is be filling in the blanks where we can, and, you know, get the ball rolling on the disaster council. We can always add folks, but just start thinking about, just moving forward, let's look at the emergency operations plan. Let's date it. If it is up to date and meets the standards, let's put a date on it and get it out there, and make sure that people are actually aware of it. Because I know one of the things that happens is, I know our Mark Mills, our chief Mills, just created an incident plan. Well, I just met with the president of the Fire Association, and that hadn't trickled down to the firefighters who were going to implement it. So we need to make sure that people are aware that are in charge, that they have a role. But I'd like to see us get the ball rolling, and then we can maybe form a subcommittee on disaster preparedness, start looking at that, as you suggest. But with that, I'd like to open it up to public comment. I know Cindy's been waiting here all night to speak on this, and others also probably. So Cindy?
Cindy Swift, Fairfax. I'll be brief. I concur with the mayor on this. As far as the emergency operations plan we have now, it's supposed to be completely republished every four years. So the last time it was reviewed, 2010, it should have been a full review and published. It contains, part of what it does is takes the town and breaks it out into communities. So each community is represented with egress and, and all that, and the main roads in the, in the building, in the communities. It just needs to be totally reviewed. As far as the chief talking about what they did with the December storms, a couple takeaways that I had from that conversation was that they took the opportunity as far as taking the equipment out, setting the equipment up, and noticing that perhaps there were things that weren't working, or things that were needed in the future. The emergency operations plan should talk about tabletop exercises, and the exercises, and, and real exercises to address those things, so that when we do have disasters, we're prepared for them. As far as the disaster committee, I agree, we need to reinstitute that, and it should be reflective of the community, such as a business rep, a volunteer board rep, CERT members, you know. I think the previous one had the town manager, because the town manager was the EOC chief. So the town manager was always on, on the previous one. So I think we need to do that. Our town is way behind other communities. As far as our preparedness, we have a lot to do, and I think anything we do along those lines will help in recovery, or change how that recovery is addressed, because we're better prepared, so that may alleviate some issues for some disasters. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Other members of the public wanting to speak on this issue? Okay, I see none. I'd bring it back to the council, then. Other comments, or we can move forward and direct staff? Peter?
Couple of questions. When was the last time the disaster council met, or was formally operating?
I think the last time it met, our best guess is 2010.
2010, okay. So the council sort of needs to be reconstituted, I guess, or?
Pretty much. It was formed because it reviews the emergency operations plan.
Okay, and one, just real quick question, are the sandbags still available and so forth, in case there's another rain event right now?
Yeah, so we're going to check in that tomorrow. We, we, obviously, we put them out when they're needed, so we'll be putting them out again along in sand.
And just a, a general comment, I, I, one of the things that I see is a real important need, I think it is, you know, as I discussed with David, it's good to be looking, you know, thinking about steps ahead after a disaster happens, how, you know, how to regroup. But I think the most important thing is, you know, saving lives. And, and I think the most life-threatening event would be a fire, or earthquake, or combination of the two. I think a flood, you can kind of get to high ground at least, but where I live in the Cascades, I could see that just being a, a firestorm, kind of Oakland Hills, Topanga Canyon kind of conflagration. And so one of the things I think that is really important, in, in whatever capacity or auspices, is to figure out how to get people evacuated, and, and inform people of that, you know, on a block-by-block basis. Because my experience when there was a fire up on Live Oak was, nobody could, would be able to get in or out, just with the emergency vehicles, and people, I, I, my first thought was, oh, God, I got to go up there and save my dog. You know, and it's like, wait a second, this is, you know, fortunately, it was just a little tiny fire, but, you know, multiply that by, you know, a thousand people. And I think what we're going to be looking at is lots of, in the event of a conflagration like that, people having to figure out how to walk away from the fire and not die of smoke inhalation. I mean, it could, it could be that grim of a situation. So not necessarily reflecting my pessimistic nature, but I, I think we really do need to, at some point in this process, really think about evac, being able to evacuate people, you know, on a block-by-block basis. So I'm hoping that that will be our focus, in, in, you know, in addition to, of course, all the planning that needs to be done by town staff and emergency services.
So Renee?
Yeah, I, I was gonna, I, I would like to request and, and see what all of you think about a council training, if you will, a council workshop that is geared toward walking us through what do we need to know? When I first was appointed, I went to a FEMA training, and I'm not quite sure why I ended up there, but I wanted to understand basically what systems were in place. And they showed scenarios of two places where, in one disaster scenario, the mayor played the perfect role, and was able to work with the public in a way that was, that, that made the rescue effort successful, and the other where there was a total debacle. And a lot of it came down to the role that the electeds played, because even though we don't really have a role in our EOC, we are perceived as the people who know. So I would like very strongly to request, if you guys think it's a good idea, that we do have a?
You're right. And two MCCMC dinners ago in Novato, they brought in a terrific dinner speaker, the best of the nine years I've ever gone to these things, and we should find out who that person was and invite that person.
Yeah, and we can, we can look at, I'm sorry, David.
No, no, because it was that good. And he, I think it was, he specifically addressed this fact of public outreach, and the fact that the biggest role that we're going to play is the calming down of, of the community, and the ability to give them information in real time, earn their confidence, and be able to deliver important information. You're exactly right, but that information exists, and the council members were treated to it at that dinner.
So Frank Cox at the county kind of co-chairs with Bill Tyler of Novato Fire, the group that we participate in. Frank gives a lot of trainings. I'm not sure that that's the training. We can look for this person who spoke in Novato. We can get there also. Sandra Foul just hired an emergency operations coordinator who came from Long Island, New York, and was involved in Hurricane Sandy, so.
Yeah, I'm actually even looking for, on the ground, here in Fairfax today, if the fire came tomorrow. So we've got our chiefs, and we've got our town manager, and we've got people with different, you know, bits of information, but I need a training.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on the list of for-sure to-dos. And I would just say that, what I'd like to say, that to get, because we're not really ready for that, to be frank, we need to get this disaster council moving. So I would say, just Garrett, let's fill in the blanks where we can on the back of this. I think Cindy, I'm going to call on you. I know you no longer work for the Corps of Engineers, but you're CERT-trained and very involved to be part of the first disaster council meeting, if, if you'd like to be. I see your head nodding, kind of? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. And so let's fill in what we can, and let's talk about trying to get this meeting scheduled in the next couple of months. And probably you and I can talk more about it as well, is what we do, just to, to just get started. And other comments of the council? John?
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of parts of it. I mean, getting started on this disaster council is, is a part of it. Talking about evacuation is another big part of it. Communication and how people get, I mean, because the, I mean, one of the things I've been working on with the trails, people, I beat it to death, but, you know, I'll mention it one more time, is that, that is one option for how to get out. And, you know, knowing where those trails are, knowing the various different routes in between your home and other areas where you may need to go, or may need to go to help somebody else that you know. You know, and I, I sense that there's a lot of interest from everybody on the council. And so, you know, maybe forming a subcommittee, you know, is not, you know, the, the best thing, and since it's good and pertinent information, if, if we're getting educated, let's make it a council meeting, and we can all go, and it can be, the, the community can also participate as much as possible. I mean, I think it's good if everybody knows all the different aspects. It's, it's, could be, you don't know what a disaster is going to be until it starts developing. And you're right, Peter, if it's, happens to be an earthquake in the summer, it's going to be an earthquake and a fire. And, you know, or if it's an earthquake in the winter, it's going to be slides, and, you know, it's going to be multifaceted and difficult to deal with. In terms of this disaster council, I think it's important to also look at the bottom-up kind of thing, and coordination of different people in the community, and skills that we have, CERT-trained people, you know, those are all important things that need to be part of the matrix. One thing that I should also mention in passing is that in the general plan, there's a provision that is not reflected in our code, but I would very much like the council to talk about it, and, you know, think about it as a, as something maybe to have reflected in our code. And it's, I, I looked at what happened in the Oakland Hills, the area along Tunnel Road, which was hit pretty much completely by the fire, was a lot like Fairfax. It had a lot of hundred-year-old cottages that people had built, you know, they were summer cabins that got winterized somewhat, and, you know, some, they had like some illegal units tucked here and there, and a lot of trees, and it felt really nice. It was a lot like Fairfax. And that, talking to a fireman who did the assessment afterwards of how few people died in that area, and that area was also crossed by pedestrian trails, as Fairfax is, and that's how the people got out. And so that was one of the things driving me to work on our trails in Fairfax. But looking at what that area looks like today is very, it's disheartening and disappointing, because you don't have a community that looks, that has kind of a soul to it. What you have is a lot of kind of maxed-out beige stucco boxes that are as big as possible for, you know, the, the lot coverage ratio. And people kind of took their insurance money and built these big McMansions and, and then moved on. And it kind of tore the soul out of the, the heart, out of the community, and you don't have the affordable rental units tucked around the back.
We might be getting a little off topic.
So I know, it's, it's a big subject, but one of the things in the general plan states that I would like us to take up is that in the event of a firestorm, where we lose 350 units of housing, for instance, in the Cascade, or something like that, you're going to get a lot of people coming for building permits at the same time. And, you know, it's, it's going to be, it's going to turn into a rubber stamping operation, and it's, one of the things that is suggested in that general plan is that if people are willing to rebuild on the same footprint, basically rebuild what was there before, then they can get their permits fast. And if they want a giant McMansion, they don't.
I have a suggestion, John. I think that's appropriate for the Planning Commission to have a discussion on first.
Yeah, that's probably true.
And so let's.
That's precisely the thing that I was talking about 10 minutes ago, for Peter and I to look at.
Okay, well, let's, let's suggest that that is something, I know we've, the Planning Commission is getting a lot of assignments, but it seems like it's an appropriate thing for them to work through first before it comes to the council.
Well, I think that's actually how our code is structured, so anything like that does go through the Planning Commission first.
Yeah, and I think they should have the discussions.
I think it would be also appropriate at the council level to see if there's support for that.
And a quick question, if I may, John. Where in the general plan is that discussed, if you know? I get to get up, but if you?
Maybe you guys can talk about that offline.
Yeah, why don't we talk about it afterwards? I, I can't tell you the number on that section.
Okay, so Garrett, do we need a motion on this?
Can I make one more recommendation?
Yes, quickly.
So looking at the, at the disaster council, I'd like to just propose, and this could go somewhere in the record, either to additions or substitutions, however it makes sense. And one would be that the vice mayor serve as well, only because there is a rotating, usually, vice to mayorship, and that continuity could be helpful, and just keep it going for at least the two years. And the other is that Marin Search and Rescue here in the county has, is the largest number of volunteer hours given to any organization that there is, I think 60,000 hours of volunteer time. They are incredibly well-trained, and there's a whole youth contingent. They are incredibly well-trained and there's a whole youth contingent. And there are many of them that live in Fairfax. So they have skills and they have ideas that would be useful. So I'd like to propose that we put that in.
Okay, well, let's consider that. And I don't think we need a motion, right? This is just a discussion. Okay, now, I was negligent in 10 o'clock, not revising the agenda, but we have two more items. I know at least one person is waiting for the next item and we have to also consider Agenda Item 15 at this meeting. So I think we're doing good for us as far as timing goes, so let's press on. And Garrett, you're going to give us a staff report on Agenda Item 14, discussion consideration of Pilot Residential Parking Permit System.
Great. So we are recommending that you consider the, well, at least consider, discuss the Pilot Residential Parking Permit System and accept our staff recommendation to solicit community input on the matter, including conducting a town forum, establishing an online community engagement forum to facilitate responses with a report back to the council in April. So as you know, back in November, the council discussed a petition submitted by the Inyo neighborhood regarding parking. Their concern was the impact of parking and they were suggesting that perhaps a residential parking permit system be implemented related to overnight parking. At December, in December, the council continued that discussion and at that time, you did adopt a resolution to allow overnight parking in the parcade and the Mono Street lot in hopes of addressing that issue. Really, staff hasn't really seen much of a difference in the overnight parking at this time, but we'll see. So I think one of the things we point out in the staff report is nothing is ever easy as it seems. There's always unintended consequences. And I really like the Mill Valley analogy, which is parking is like toothpaste. You block it, restrict it, restrict it, it's going to overflow somewhere else. So related to that, what we're recommending as staff is really that we take an opportunity to really get feedback further council on both the neighborhoods we're proposing that could be a pilot program as well as adjacent neighborhoods that we believe actually park in those neighborhoods. But what we would do in addition to a town forum, and this is something we talked about earlier related to our community engagement plan, is we would then roll out what we, our peak democracy, which allows people then to comment on the issues. You can have subset questions. Allows discussion at least to be controlled from the perspective of keeping it civil, allows us to create reports from it, and then ultimately we can report back to council with all that information. And I don't know if you want me to go through all the key concepts, but pretty much the questions would be things like to the people, do you see overnight parking as a problem? Do you see timed parking as a problem? Residential parking system, if we were to create it and we're proposing Mono, Inyo, Napa, Pacheco and Dominga de Sherman, is that, you know, is that something you're interested in? You know, what, should it be expanded, those type of issues? And one of the other questions we would ask basically is number of permits for household to allow for parking. Easiest thing, if you're going to do a pilot program, is keep the administration to a minimum, which is you just issue a certain number of permits per household and then they would have to borrow from their neighbors if they had an event or need to use something. Problems with that, we would have to figure out how many parking spaces there are to start with, how many housing units there are actually there, whether legal or illegal, to make sure that we have a handle on that. And then we'd have basic questions like is RV parking a problem or boats and trailers? Should garages be required for parking? And that, are they interested in a managed parking system ultimately? That's something that we were going to, planning to discuss within the downtown center element, which would be a managed parking for those residential and commercial parking. So in essence, what we're recommending is before we move forward with a pilot program, we go ahead and get as much input as we can so that the council can consider that in your decision-making process. And that's where I talked about a town forum and we use the online platform to get as much comment, feedback as possible. We may put out, we'll probably send out notices to all the neighborhoods in that area. We may do a banner, I'm not too sure. We'll probably put up A-frame signs talking about the opportunity for people to comment. And we're hoping, and we think we can do this, that we can do all that, hold the forum, get the feedback and report back to you at your first meeting in April so that you can really have an idea of what the community is saying. If from all that feedback, it's pretty clear to us that they want something, then in April we would hopefully then kind of give you an outline of how we see a program working. If it's not as clear, then I think we're going to need some direction from the council of how to proceed. So that's pretty much the staff report.
Thank you. Questions of Garrett? Seeing none, let's open it up to public comment. I think Mimi Newton's been waiting here just for this side then. Thank you, Mimi.
Mimi Newton with an M. 139 Mono with an M. You know, I listened to Mr. Ardito's complaints at the council meetings previously when I wasn't here, but I was watching. And, you know, I have actually a real concern about even doing a pilot project. I feel kind of like a guinea pig in an experiment and I know that a couple of the neighbors I've spoken with about this issue have no idea that this is happening. So I'm glad Garrett said that they would try to reach out to individuals because not everybody is staying at home on Wednesday nights watching you guys. And I feel like the parking concerns that Mr. Ardito expressed were somewhat overblown because most of the people in our neighborhood both have a driveway that can fit at least one, usually two, even more cars, garages, one garage, two garage carports, there's off-street parking in the alley between Mono and Inyo for the houses there. People who live on the parking sites of the streets actually use their own driveways to park in on the street and block their own driveway. And there's two houses that have no driveway and no parking, no garage, and I live in one of them. So I can't park in front of somebody else's driveway, although they do. And I just feel like those of us who don't have a driveway, there's only two of us, the end of Inyo and the end of Mono, don't have a driveway, don't have a garage, don't have any reserved parking, don't have any place to put off-street parking, would be unfairly affected even by a pilot project. And it feels very intrusive to think that I would have like the number of vehicles that I could park be dictated by the town and that I would probably end up with the fewest available parking spaces because everybody else could either use their driveway or their garage or park in front of their driveway. And, you know, so I know there's a lot of people that park in our neighborhood. Usually it's Friday and Saturday nights that you have a difficulty finding parking and sometimes you have to go around. I think the idea of letting people park in the parking lots, the town of parking lots is brilliant and I think should solve anybody's problem if comes home late on a Friday from work and can't find a parking space. What else? I have a couple comments here. So we even have one neighbor who's taking it upon themselves to paint a red zone of their own on the curb in front of the other side of their driveway. So we already have limited parking issues and now people are like, oh, I'm just going to paint this red. Nobody else to park there. And...
Which, by the way, we're supposed to paint over and talk to the neighbor who's done that.
Great.
Because that is illegal.
Well, they're leaving notes on people's windshield saying, you better leave or you're going to be towed, you know? I've gotten three notes from them so far, even though I know it was bogus. Anyway, the, I just, I have a problem with having to get the town to tell me how many people I can have overnight virtue of the parking. You guys could be, I have to tell you, oh, I'm having a party tonight. Can I have more than two people park in my neighborhood? I mean, that kind of affords my sense of privacy and fairness in terms of, you know, we live, if we live there, we know what the traffic patterns are, we know what the parking patterns are. If there's somebody coming from out of the town to, you know, I know Mr. Ardito's mom had a nurse, he said, that couldn't find parking on their street that day. And, you know, I thought to myself, you know, she has a two-car driveway with a two-car garage. It's not unusual for people to just pull up in front of their own driveway. I really didn't get it. Not that I want to pick on the Arditos, but the other thing is the democracy, peak democracy idea, if you guys are looking for input from all these people with garages and driveways and you get input from the one or two people that don't have it, where our voices, our little minority voices are going to be outweighed by people who already have to be a surplus of parking available to them and not so much of a need as I do to make sure that I have just as much right to have as many friends over to park around my house as, you know, we can find it. So, you know, there's a lot of Arditos in the neighborhood. They actually could form a political block if you're looking at peak democracy is who's going to get the highest number of votes. It's going to be an Ardito vote. I love the Arditos, by the way. All of them, they're wonderful people. So I guess that's it. That's my rambling comments on that thing.
Thank you, Mimi. I think those are good comments and things to consider because as we go forward on this, there may be a lot of folks who vote for it and then there's a minority. It may not be, it should be a majority versus a minority, is that we really want to hear. I think, Mimi, when you're, when you have time to focus your comments a little bit, you know, it's also the weight of the comments. And I think Mimi raised some really good points. So, you know, just that one of the things we should factor in on our questions is how is allowing you overnight parking in the parcade and mono lots working? Because I think we feel that that's pretty successful. So I think that was a good point. That would be another question to ask in this because that may alleviate a lot of people's concerns. But go ahead, Garrett, to speak.
Oh, I should have pointed out, when we use the online platform, it's not structured as a vote, so you'll just be getting comments. Now, that doesn't mean people won't tell you what they think, but it will be strictly comments.
So a question on, and you probably don't know this because we haven't implemented yet, but on peak democracy, I mean, often you can get people who can do what's called a bot, which means they can just, is when you enter into peak democracy, do you have to enter a captcha at the end? So because basically you can write a program to just send in a lot of stuff. If you have to do a captcha, you know, the weird squiggly lines and stuff at the end that says, put this in here, it's really, depending on how complex they are, it's difficult to write a bot to just blow your whole thing.
So part of peak democracy requires you to register. So you have to register.
Okay.
And then what they do is, it's a little more detailed, but they have what's called claimed, or they have claimed, unclaimed, and then they have uncivil. So it gets monitored and claimed means you've submitted your name, email address, that's with your comment. If you never complete the registration, that's called unclaimed, that goes in a different category. And uncivil means people perhaps have used words they shouldn't have and then those never get posted.
Okay, so when we look at that, we can weigh the unclaimed versus the claimed so that potentially that would give us a read on that potential. I mean, there will people, are people who won't want to register because they feel it's a privacy issue, but, but I think if we see piles of unclaimed, we can weigh that.
And one of the, I'm sorry, and then one of the good things to point out your comment is if they do not wish to register, there is a function in which they can submit a comment via PDF. And so we do allow that and obviously you can weigh that comment any way you like. But it's pretty dynamic and we can get data and everything, so you'll be able to have that because we can also do it by neighborhood also.
John?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds, I'd be interested to learn more about the system. I mean, there are also, you saw the, I guess it was the Patch was a forum for a while, you know, where a lot of people weighed in. And one of the things that we saw there is, you know, one individual might have, you know, 20 different aliases and they'd just swamp it with a similar opinion over and over again from different, you know, some of it inflammatory, sometimes not. But, I mean, there's a lot of creative people out of there and they will figure out a way to game the system. So, you know, if it's thought through some of these things and try to figure out ways to keep the workarounds from being worked.
It's a pretty good program that addresses type of things, manages IP addresses. And so it's set up so it tries to address all those different concerns.
Yeah.
But I guess we'll see when we actually set it up.
Yeah, we'll see. And, you know, and that basically the more technologically adept will have a louder voice and certainly the people with a computer will have a louder voice. I mean, it's important to have many facets and many avenues for comments. And there's certainly, you know, parking is one of those issues that many, many people have opinions on and, and we'll hear from them.
And I'm sorry, Cindy, I didn't see that you wanted to speak on this, so I brought it back to the council early. I apologize.
I just had a question. When you do the online tool, you had talked about a town forum. You're talking about a pilot area. Would you be opening the online dialogue to everybody? So you'd be getting input from people not only in that community, but anywhere?
Yeah, so one of the good things, dynamic things for peak democracy is we'll do it, we can map it. So we can map comments just from the pilot area, we can map it with adjacent neighborhoods. So as a council, the information you'll get is from the different geographic zones. So you could see people in the area, people in adjacent neighborhoods and anybody outside the area.
Great, well, that sounds like a great tool. So I think we kind of brought it back to the council. It sounds like we've discussed it. Peter?
Just a comment, I guess, you know, knowing the contours of the toothpaste is maybe not so simple a task. Was curious, Garrett, if there was any feedback or sense of the numbers of people that were taking advantage of parking overnight in the parcade that was suggested a while back? Has anyone been keeping track of that?
Not just anecdotally. I just, we just asked, the chief just asked the officers just to take a look. It was a little skewed because when there's a storm, everyone parks in the parcade if you're Norolans. And so anecdotally, they're thinking, well, it doesn't seem like it's a whole lot of people parking more than usual. Because people can't have a permit now to park there. They just pay and then they're allowed to park there overnight.
Yeah, I mean, that might solve that local problem for folks on Mono. It's, it's, a quick question about the peak democracy thing. Do people register with their address so we can actually tell if they're Fairfax residents?
Yes.
Because you know, would obviously want to weigh comments from people in Fairfax.
Yes, it does, and that's why we're able to map where the comments come from.
Okay.
All right, so I think it sounds like we're going to move forward and do your best to keep on track. But if we run into, you know, I know that you and Michelle have to get peak democracy up and running and there's a lot to do, so do your best to keep on track for the April meeting, but let us know if you run into any glitches. So with that, thank you, and we're going to move on to our last item on the agenda. Thanks for staying, folks. And this is review current assignments and make council assignments as needed to assign council members to various boards and committees and et cetera. Since Larry has left, there are some openings, there are some that people have been alternates on, and then there are some that are clearly open. So you want to give the staff report, Garrett or Michelle? Michelle, I'm sorry, you're the staff reportee. Garrett, she wants Garrett to do it.
Town clerk's directing her minion to do her work. Yes, as the mayor pointed out, there are vacancies, given the councilwoman Bragman did hold different committee assignments or on JPAs or boards. We have a list here, you can see it's Affordable Housing Committee, Flood Zone 9 alternate, just using these as examples. just using these as examples. Some options for the council is you are designated, some of you are designated alternates to some of those bodies that Councilwoman Bragman was on. You're going to those meetings now. You could choose just to assume those responsibilities. Um, and then talk about the other ones. I know with a new council member, as we went through previously when we had two new council members, um, you kind of, there's a give and take in figuring out what the new person, uh, what they would like to sit on. Just some things when you get to it, like the MIRA alternate, if you wanted to do something like that, uh, we would have to come back because our understanding now is we have to do that by resolution in selecting the alternates. Right now for MIRA, the police chiefs, the primary, councilwoman Bragman was the alternate one and the sergeant's alternate two. It doesn't have to be a council member, but what we could do on some of those things, we could kind of clarify for you, um, what needs to be done.
Just with the, if folks would, wouldn't mind, since I was Larry's alternate on some, I'd like to just, if you don't mind, if I could just weigh in first, just because I was alternate on a few of those. I was hoping, I've been attending Marin Clean Energy meetings, actually even when Larry was on it quite frequently, and so I would like to take over as the primary. Marin Telecommunications, I also attended those often when Larry was on it and more recently since he's been off. And actually, MTA would, would like to formally appoint me to the Board of Community Media Center of Marin, which is not a council assignment, but if you're on MTA. Also, since I co-chaired the Measure J measure, um, now it's, it actually would be the Measure J Oversight Committee, I would sort of like to take that. I'm just going to throw these out there. And at one time, there was a question of whether or not I was the Ross Valley Fire Authority alternate and it went back and forth. So I'd just like to throw my name out as an alternate for that. And, um, we could clear up that miscommunication easily. And, um, I am on the Affordable Housing Committee already, so there's another council member on that. So that's my two cents. Normally I wait for everybody else, but I thought I'd get those ones out of the way. Unless everyone really wants all those. Okay, so I'll open it up to other council members.
Let me jump in. Well, Peter, you could take the year off. Of course, that's, you got nothing to do.
Well, no, there's alt, if, if I become the primary, there's alternates.
Yes, but most people go to all the meetings to which they're assigned. John and I had the opportunity, uh, to discuss, and we've been talking about this, with fire and paramedics, and, um, those should be teamed together. And, uh, John and I discussed it and he would like to be considered, um, the primary for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, and I would be his alternate in that. Michelle, just for the sake of scriveting, um, I think it's called the Ross Valley Fire, at this point, Department rather than Authority. I think it, it kind of changed a couple of years ago when we rejiggered it, so just for purposes of that. On the MIRA thing, um, I do think it is, it is police, police rather than, uh, having a MIRA alternate on the, uh, on the council. But if it was to be a council member, since I am the MIRA alternate for the Fire Board, I would throw it out there and say I would also do it for the police. But I do think it would be, uh, police primary, police secondary, and we would change that by resolution as the manager just suggested. I have just two other points. On John's thing, maybe, John, you can help me out here. On Measure K, have we spent the money? Is it all over? Is there still a mandate?
There's, there's not a lot going on there now. Uh, we redid one of the bonds a few years ago and that, we came up with some more money. Uh, we met, we spent the money.
Where is Measure K on this list? It's not on this list.
Yes, it is.
It's Measure I Oversight Committee, which is.
The third one down on John's list.
Yeah.
Where, oh, oh, we're looking at the other side. Okay.
Yeah, so, right there.
Oh, okay.
Measure, Measure K is, you know, the bond measure for street improvements and a few other.
I just wanted to thought, uh, you know, I didn't know if it was done.
Um, everybody thought it was done and it came back and we managed to fix some more roads, so that was good. Um, uh, unfortunately, paying back the money takes longer than it takes roads to wear out.
So is there, so you think there's still a committee?
I think there has to be one, but there is no funding with your refinancing.
Yeah, there's no funding to make decisions about.
So we haven't really met.
It's on the books, though.
Okay. Can I ask just one question and then I'll, I'll pass this off? I, I've been curious about the Tree Committee because I, I know Renee is on it and has been up in my neighborhood watching us denouement the landscape up there over the last couple of months, uh, as old pine trees take leave of earth. If somebody disagreed with the Tree Committee's decision for whatever reason, they would appeal that to whom? Jim or ultimately to the council?
I think ultimately it goes to the council.
So how could, what would, Renee would obviously not be able to vote on that because she would have been making the decision at a lower level of administrative responsibility.
Well, how about this? I'd have to look to see.
No, I was just thinking, among all of the things, should a council member be on the Tree Committee? If, so I'm getting.
I think there should be.
Well, getting the negative nod from the, uh, from the town council, from town attorney, because it just seems, for all the reasons she's going to tell us.
Uh, no, honestly, no. If you're going to have something that's appealable to council, then you shouldn't have a council member voting on it down below because they would have to recuse themselves. If it's appealable, you can't have somebody hearing an appeal on something that they voted on before.
Well, they would have to recuse, right?
Right.
That would leave four of us.
Right.
Well, and I think the statute says it, or the ordinance says it, um, one of the members is a town council person. Uh, I was on the Tree Committee as a planning commissioner. I don't know that, um, any, that ever was a problem during the years I was on the Tree Committee as a planning commissioner, you know.
It may not, it may not have been, um, an issue or a problem, but, um, coincidentally, there's a, a recent case that just came down, uh, last week, I guess, um, about, uh, council members appealing something from a planning commission decision. And that act of appealing from a planning commission decision, um, meant that, that the council member should not be voting on it according to the courts. So, um, I can, and I can provide you a copy of that case if you'd like, Woody's. Yeah, Woody's in Newport Beach. You know, you know the.
Don't know that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Maybe we want to take a look at that ordinance.
Yeah.
So could we, um, just a suggestion, can we make a decision on the Tree Committee alternate just to have it done and then revisit the ordinance if, if Peter's right that it has a council member on it? And, you know, how many times is the Tree Committee decision going to be appealed?
Is there a precedent?
No, you, I, there's a larger issue here. Is that your work on this.
No, no, I understand.
Is really hard. I mean, it's a lot of schlepping around and.
Oh, no, it's fine. Really.
And so just one.
Don't, don't do it for me.
So why don't we just decide on that? And just another thing I wanted to throw out that I forgot to mention is I'm on the Zero Waste Committee, but Renee and I have talked and since Peter has, in his interviews, expressed interest in zero waste, I'm happy to step down from that if, if Peter has an interest in being on that committee, uh, rather than me. I think it only meets quarterly, so it's not that extensive.
Uh, yeah, if I, if I could chime in, um, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Um, I'd be happy to serve as a Tree Committee alternate. Uh, you know, I'm, understand I'm the, the low man on the totem pole, uh, in terms of assignments and stuff. I was interested, though, in actually being on the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. Um, and, uh, I, I could also, uh, step, step up to the Affordable Housing Committee, that's something that would, would interest me.
Great.
No one else wants those.
Are we going to talk, we sort of go through all these?
I think we're talking about it, so let's just put Peter's name down, um, and because I'm on that. And then just to throw out there, if my request for MCE and MTA to be the primary, um, remember there's alternates available for both of those as well, so we can't forget that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd be interested in being an alternate to, uh, to either of those, um, or both. Um, so those are kind of the ones that are, um, uh, you know, of interest to me. I, I could take on the, uh, alternate to the flood zone too, if other, you know.
You should.
Just in terms of taking on some of Larry's old.
You should.
That'd be good.
Um, responsibilities.
And so Renee, would you like to?
No, I mean, I, um, I was interested in the MTA, um, spot and probably the alternate spot if, yeah, I mean, I, I was, it mostly would be, you know, focusing my support on CMCN, but, um, I could also do that at the alternate spot.
So MTA is not CMCN?
No, I understand, I understand.
It's separate and CMCN comes in and gives, um, reports to MTA and MTA assigns the board member to CMCN?
Yeah, no, I understand. I read about it. I was just, that was my original draw.
So you might be interested in being the alternate to MTA?
Yes.
That's great.
Um, and I also was interested in the Affordable Housing Committee, but I, um, I think that I will let you go with that if, if you're, if you're into it.
Yeah.
That's where you want to be.
You know, I kind of want to balance deference to people that have been on the council longer than me too, but.
No, but I think your planning commission experience would, would serve well there.
Okay.
So.
John, your light's on. Does that mean you're going to comment?
That means my light's on.
Okay, well, we can turn it off.
Yeah, I'd be interested in the Paramedic Authority also. Um, so you know, nobody's jumping on the MCCMC, but.
No. I don't even know what that is. Could someone say what the MCCMC Joint Services?
Yes, I can. I believe Lou punted that to me so fast when I arrived that I was barely making the seat warm. Um, I attended it for a couple of years, um, and then found it to be, um, what's the word I'm use, looking for? Ah, useless and boring.
Okay, so you're not really selling it. So David, would you also say, rather than the, um, adjectives, what about, what does it do?
It, according, when last seen, although it seems to have a morphing definition and perhaps a change during Larry's tenure, it seemed to be an organization chaired by, um, Nevada, Nevada Councilmember, um, Eklund, to oversee the fascinating operations of all of the JPAs that govern. Even in light of the fact that some of the JPAs just seem to be swimming along rather nicely for year on end, they seem to deserve ever increasing levels of scrutiny.
How often does it meet?
Uh, when I was on it, it seemed to have been meeting quarterly maybe, but I think it kind of, um, you know, decreased a little bit.
Well, I will say a couple of things, just, um, to not put the negative spin that David's doing, is that David had a lot of negative spin on the ABAG Committee that I took on and Pat Eklund is responsible from Nevada for moving that forward. We only meet quarterly and she's really done a great job. And so as far as the work involved, you know, you can respond to her work and not spend a lot of time. I would also say, Peter, just a suggestion, is that it might be, and I'm not putting a negative spin on it or trying to give it to you as the low man on the totem pole because I don't view you that way. I think that it gives you an opportunity to get to know people in other jurisdictions. It sounds like it meets very infrequently and if Pat is still working on it, she does so much work that really you don't have to do a lot of background work. And so I think, um, I would view it the way I view, uh, working with Pat on the ABAG Committee. It's a good opportunity to meet other people and you learn a lot and you also can really focus in on these issues. So would you consider it?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, when I, uh, applied for this position, I said I'd be willing to take on, take on assignments.
Well, Peter, I will tell you that, um, all joking aside, um, I've served on MCCMC committees, um, that have required me to spend many hours on airplanes and airports, uh, with the councilwoman from Nevada, and she's fantastic. Um, I love her dearly. Um, in fact, I was sitting next door at the MCCMC dinner the other evening. So I think I have some leeway, um, to, to joust with her on these issues. Uh, but, uh, as far as she goes, she's fantastic and you will learn a lot. As for the committee itself?
Sure.
Bocca Lupo, as they say in Italian.
Okay, well, be, you know, be happy to take that on, so.
Let me just kind of tell, oh, I'm going, just going to tell you where we are right now. The Zero Waste Committee, and we can change this, I'm just going to go over what we have right now. The Zero Waste Committee would move from me to Peter and Renee is also on that. The Affordable Housing Committee, Peter. Flood Zone Nine Advisory Board, alternate, Peter. MCE primary is Kohler with alternate, Peter. Marin Telecommunications Agency primaries, Kohler, alternate Renee. The one we just talked about, MCCMC Joint Services Authority Oversight Committee, Peter. Um, it's actually Measure J Oversight Committee now.
I think Measure I goes through this fiscal year.
Well, I think it would be Measure I slash J because, so we, um, I'd like that to be me. And then the MIRA alternate, I think David said he would vote for police maybe with himself as the secondary.
I think what Garrett's going to come back and recommend is that, uh, the police, different levels of the police, different officers, or the chief and an officer serve as the MIRA and the MIRA alternate. Am I correct on that?
Correct, so it'd be PD, PD, and then if a council member could be, wanted to be the second alternate, you can, or it actually could be a staff.
Well, why don't we not make an assignment for that one and leave that open at this point? And then the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, we have potential, John, David, I know Peter expressed an interest.
Peter should have it. Peter, enjoy the alternate. Um, my experience with John is, uh, you can attend the meetings, but he attends all meetings.
Okay, so, um, so it would be, John would be the primary, Peter would be the alternate. And, um, also Frank, we want to thank you for your service on that and I'm sure, uh, folks can meet with you, but we, we will open it up, so you just wait a minute. And then the Tree Committee, uh, Ross Valley Fire Authority alternate, could that be Kohler? And then the Tree Committee.
No, wait, wait. Peter should do that because the more, because these two agencies are so interlocked.
All right, Peter, okay. And then Tree Committee alternate, Peter, and we agreed that the Tree Committee, um, let's just assign Peter to it unless we have a bunch of public comment on this, but, um, we can revisit the Tree Committee as well as the MIRA. Okay, so then I want to open it up to public comment, Frank. You've been diligently waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. In, uh, as far as the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority, I started working with, uh, then Fairfax Fire Chief George Headham in 1980 to bring paramedic services to Fairfax, um, and was pretty much the driving force here in the Ross Valley to form the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority. And we did that in 1982 and I've served Fairfax, uh, in that capacity, at the pleasure of the Fairfax Town Council since 1982. And then a, a few years ago, then Larry became the, the, the regular and I was the alternate. Um, I, I am the last founding, uh, member of, of, of the, of the Board of Directors of the Paramedic Authority, still, still associated with the Ross Valley. So it's been a great 33 years. So Larry and I have both worked on trying to, to, to get a third unit up here in Fairfax, a, a paramedic unit, a, um, a, an ALS unit, uh, with, with two medics on it. Since, since, when we ran the numbers in Fairfax, it's, 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 it's like 92% of the code three responses coming out of the Fairfax Firehouse is a, is a medical emergency call. And, and it's really a need to, to put a unit up here in Fairfax and, uh, we've worked on that, but haven't been successful. But anyway, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to allow me to serve and I would hope that the, that our board members still, uh, looked at, at the opportunity of, of putting a third unit here in the Fairfax Firehouse.
Frank, I would, I would like to ask, I think we have, uh, John down as the primary that he would hopefully meet with you and try to gain, um, 33 years, probably not that much, but. much, but try to get some insights from you, and maybe periodically check in with you, since you have so much background, and we really appreciate your service and all the work that you've done for 33 years? Wow, great, thank you. So, any other public comment on this? So bringing it back to the council, let's see where we are. Do folks want to debate some of these assignments, or are we good?
I'm just looking at, this is a little bit of a disproportionate number of things that our mayor is doing. And you're doing a lot of big, big work things, so I just wanted to just sort of put it out there, one last shot around, whether, you know...
Well, some of those things are really as mayor, and they don't take a lot of time. And otherwise, for the longest time, I was kind of short on things, but in the future, we can revisit this, because I will tell you, Marin Energy Authority, or Marin Clean Energy, and Marin Telecommunications, I very frequently went to those meetings. So it's kind of not real new to me. And actually, the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority meets on the same night as Marin Clean Energy, so it gets a little dicey. That Larry, that's often why Larry missed it. So I think we can certainly revisit it if it gets kind of tight, but a lot of these things are not that much. And in the future, maybe I'd like to talk about the Climate Action Committee, maybe somebody else could take that on. But right now, I'd like to see through a little bit longer on that, if that's okay.
Okay, and then also, as we discussed, when we were talking about the Citizens Disaster Council, the possibility of Vice Mayor...
Vice Mayor, I think that's a great idea. I think your rationale for that makes a lot of sense, so we have continuity. And then, in the future, that when you're mayor, the next Vice Mayor can be part of it, so we can always have that continuity. I think that's great. I think that works a lot, works very well. So can we add that? Okay, great. John, your, your light is going on.
Well, I just turned it on. I mean, judging by the frequency of the meetings of the Disaster Council up till now, they might not have that continuity, but I guess, you know, just in responding to Renee's comment, I mean, is there something on there that, I mean, you were, you know, kind of, both you and David were the lighter ones, is there something you're dying to be on? You, well, I think it was Renee, because she brought up that subject. I mean, I could ask the same thing here.
No, I just, I'm your alternate on several things, so I was, you know, I was interested in the MTA. I do understand you've been going, I understand the value of the continuity, and that, you know, Larry had felt strongly about you going when he couldn't go, and you sort of took it up. So it's not that, you know, it's not a matter of that I don't appreciate the job you're doing by any means. I'm just looking at, you know, the alternate to, where are we? ABAG, which I attended the first couple of meetings about.
If you would like to be the primary on that, as I said, I think it's a good committee, and I also feel that Pat does the yeoman's work, so...
I agree with what Pat's saying.
So if you would, if you would like me to be the alternate, I'm happy to do that. I think originally you had wanted me to be the primary, so I'm happy to switch.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
So let's switch that, so we'll have me as the alternate on ABAG, and Renee would be the primary.
And can you report back to us on the graft and embezzlement that we were informed of this week at ABAG?
I don't think that's part of the job. So, and then, in the future, I think we can also kind of revisit these assignments after a while. So with those changes...
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Could you just clarify?
Go over them again?
Actually, one, did you say that MCE meets at the same time as Ross Valley Paramedic Authority?
Yeah, the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority meets, it, they don't meet very long, so you usually end up missing, you can still be the alternate, because it's rare that, it probably won't happen that much, but would you like to give somebody else the MCE?
No, I actually...
I think Frank's going to say something. Frank?
I really, the one, MCE is the thing that I'd be most interested in.
Well, you're the alternate on that.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, if there's a conflict with that, if Frank still wants to be the alternate for the paramedic, I would be the alternate.
Why don't we, Frank, what were you going to say about...
I was just going to say, Larry only missed, I think, two meetings in the year, the past year, and I served, I went to two meetings.
Well, I will...
So he would, he would call if he, if he couldn't make it, and I filled in.
Okay, so it's not that, it doesn't come up that often?
It doesn't come up that often at all.
For MCE, he missed for other reasons, but sometimes it was because of a conflict with that.
Okay, well, then, if it doesn't come up that often, I'll just stay the alternate for both then.
Okay, we can revisit it in the future.
Okay.
So, Michelle, you wanted to have an overview again?
No, I just had a question about the Ross Valley Fire Department.
Fire Authority?
Well...
Ross Valley Fire?
Yeah, I was told it was a... It is department.
It's department. Is that Peter for the alternate?
Yeah.
Oh, Peter for the alternate, yes.
Peter for the alternate, yes.
Yes, and the main person is?
John.
That has not changed.
Nothing's changed.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just their name changed, and that was when Ross joined.
Sorry, what, Kara?
Sorry, just clarification, if we form a school liaison committee with the school district, just point out, it would be Councilmember Reed and Vice Mayor Goddard who would be on that committee, because right now, the Vice Mayor is the primary that goes to the meetings, and Councilmember Reed is the alternate. But for the subcommittee, the school liaison committee, we'd have two council members, because there'd be two trustees. So I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I think, I think we talked about trying to add this on to this list, right?
Right, and I was just, and the staff reporter points it out, but I just wanted to make sure that'd be included.
So are we, so we're saying, the school liaison committee, is this not on the list right now?
Right now, on the list, it just shows as alternate and primary.
What does it show on the list? I don't even see it, so could you tell me where it is?
Right now, under, if you go to Goddard, you could see school, Ross Valley School Board Liaison.
Okay, so we've got that. And then, we would have a subcommittee out of that?
Yeah, so if we form a school liaison committee, then that would be two council members, two trustees, and I just wanted to point out, then, that the alternate to the school board liaison, who's currently Councilmember Reed, would actually be part of that.
Okay, so we would change that at that time?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's actually two different committees, to be honest, right? So we have the school board liaison, and then there's the subcommittee, which is then made up of two members of, two of the trustees. We don't have it yet.
It hasn't been formed yet.
Yeah, in prior years, we did briefly form a subcommittee with Lou Tremaine and myself, and we met with two of the school board, and together as a four-person subcommittee.
We do not have that subcommittee formed yet. When we do, then we will make that designation, and I think we're all supportive of John and Renee doing that. So, Michelle, are you clear on these assignments? Okay, great. Do we need to make a motion, or are we good? It just says review current assignments and make council assignments as needed.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. If you wanted to say motion as assigned, that's fine.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I move to accept these committee assignments as approved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion, Goddard, second, Reed, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.
And just a quick question, will, Garrett, will you be sending out, like, some list of when these groups meet and so forth? Because I have no idea what, when my next meeting is.
I think you have one tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, I have that, that dream of, like, you know, trying to get to my final exam and then, like, not knowing where.
So usually what happens is, I think Michelle informs the groups of who is assigned, and then they contact you, and, you know, it's not always the most straightforward thing, but they usually contact you, so Garrett won't have the list of when they all meet.
For some, we can let you know, the others, well, tell you what, we can give you an idea, and we'll let the agencies know, and then you'll start receiving agendas.
Okay, fair. I'll, I'll, I'll do some of my, I'll do that, too.
I can just add that the agencies have been contacting me almost daily. Have you made up your mind yet?
Yeah, and Michelle, if you could let MCE...
I'll be talking to them all tomorrow.
Yeah, MCE in particular, because there's a meeting tomorrow night, and if somebody was going to wrestle me to the ground for that, I was going to give them the packet.
Oh, how nice.
Because the packet is about 300 pages.
Sure.
Yes, every time. So with that, I think I would take a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, P, motion one, so second, blacks, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.